Good evening. It is 6 o'clock PM, Tuesday, November 2nd, 2021. I'd like to call the special meeting of the Peoria City Council to order. I'd also like to welcome everyone in our city council chambers, as well as our audience that's watching the live stream at peoriagov.org and our YouTube channel, City of Peoria TV. Madam Clerk, the council mics are open. Please call to roll.
Thank you. Mayor Ali, Councilmember Allen, Councilmember Seer, Councilmember Grayb, Councilmember Jackson, Councilmember Jensen, Councilmember Kelly, Councilmember Euler, Councilmember Regenbach,
Here.
Councilmember Ruckregel, and Councilmember Velpula. We have a quorum present, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much. Please join me and stand for a moment of silent prayer or silent reflection, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Again, this is a special meeting of the Peoria City Council to focus on the biennial budget for 2021, 2022. There are some other agenda items as well, but most of the focus will be on the biennial budget. Madam Clerk?
21-335 is a communication from the mayor and Corporation Council with a request to approve the declaration of local state of emergency.
I get a motion to approve moved by Councilman Kelly, seconded by Councilman Velpula. Any comments, questions? Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
21-336 is a communication from the city manager and Public Works Director with a request to receive and file a presentation on snow removal operations. And on your desk, there is a copy of a presentation.
That four-letter word, "snow." Manager?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have with us this evening Assistant Public Works Director Si Maroon and Public Works Director Rick Powers is here as well to walk through our snow removal plan for the year 2021, 2022. As you said, for that dreaded four-letter word, "snow," so.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor, Council, and staff, and listeners as well. We look forward to this annually to come down and present to you what our plan is for the year. And if you do have any recollection of last year, we're going to be real similar to last year's snow plan. So we're still at 17 routes. We've been at 21 prior to COVID and the pandemic. And we're proposing to go back to the 21 routes over time and hopefully, you know, that will get approved and we can start moving forward again to increasing the number of routes and shortening the amount of time that it takes to do snow removal. But as I said, this year, just as last year, we're going to be at 17 routes. The winter staffing is similar to last year as well. We have the pre-pandemic staffing level and the proposed for 22 and 23 with your approval. And we get back to the numbers that we were at pre-pandemic. We will start moving forward again and getting over and above the 17 routes. So the upcoming season is just like last year. 32 permanent maintenance workers. We've hired 15 temporary employees for the winter months and for a total of 47 employees. I would like to mention that one of the challenging factors for this year, we were not unlike many employers around the nation where we had some difficulty getting the applications and bringing people in that we thought maybe wanted to come to work for us this winter. But I believe that we've assembled a pretty good team with some returning temps. We've got a good staff of supervision. We've got, a number of people have retired on the early retirement. Lots of years, lots of experience went out the door with that. But I really truly believe that we pulled together and now we should have a staff that will get us through the winter and we will be efficient. So getting into snow routes and treatments, the primary routed streets, the ones that are signed emergency snow routes, we have 158 miles. We do three types of treatment on those streets. We do the pretreatment with the anti-icing, which is our brine application. We do the salt treatment, which is de-icing, which breaks the bond and keeps the snow in a conditioning allowing for snowpack to be plowed. And then, once we get a number of inches and the wind's blowing and we get to a point where we need to start dropping the plows, that will be the third application. And then we will stay in plow mode until we clear all primary routed streets. The priority snow route system for 21 and 22 this particular season is there are 17 routes. We had 21 routes, as we spoke of earlier. We've got two designated hill routes. Typically, in most seasons when we have the number of employees that we would typically have, which would be the 37 and the 22 temporary employees, we would be able to run at least four snow routes per shift. And when I say per shift, I'm talking about the two 12-hour shifts. We do have the eight tandem plow routes, and that has not changed. We still have the eight tandem routes. We just have less trucks on each route because we're at the 17 snow routes. We do use the hill route drivers when we go into tandem plowing. And tandem plowing, just for the sake of maybe not understanding the terminology, where we'll have two or three trucks in tandem. And that, we go into that mode, usually in the overnight hours, and we can clear the streets from curb to curb in a matter of hours. And we typically would do that leading up to the rush hour traffic in the school buses and people going to work and school and things like that. And then, of course, the two 12-hour shifts. When there's two or more inches of snow that predicted, and of course, we're still watching to make sure that it's still coming, we go into the two 12-hour shifts. Then we get into the residential plowing once we get to two inches or more of snow. There's 321 miles of residential streets. They're not salted, except under extreme conditions. And extreme conditions could be, we know that ice is coming or that we're going to have an ice storm. They're plowed only after completing the primary streets. Once those are completed, then we move into the residential streets. And we don't have a bare pavement policy for the residential streets. So the idea behind that is, is by the time we get there, there's already snowpack. The plows are going to do what they can do. And not likely are we going to see bare pavement at that point. So we just want everyone, all the passengers, or all the vehicle, the travelers, to understand that you are going to be driving on snow and snowpack on your residential streets. We do have 80 miles of alleys. They are not salted. We typically get into the alleys when there's about five or more inches of snow. And they're only plowed and only after the primary streets and the residential streets are completed. It's a pass-through only. It's a one-time pass-through. Just in fairness for everybody, we have the plows straight so that it's dropping snow on both sides. So we don't take liberty to dump all the snow onto one side or the other. So that will open up the alleys for the garbage trucks and those folks that have, that's the only access to their garage is through the alley. So the removal and timing, so between two and six inches of snowfall, we have actually 36 hours to remove all snow after the snowfall has ended. If there's six inches or more of snow, we have a removal time of 48 hours after the snow has ended once again. That has increased since we've lowered the number of routes that we have. So we just had to make up, you know, because now we've got, no streets have been eliminated from the routes, even though we went from 21 to 17. We have the same number of streets, but what we do have in with that is the routes are larger now. So it takes longer per route to get completed, for a truck driver to complete the route. So that's why we've had an increase in the two to six inches and the six inches or more. And hopefully, in the years to come, if we get the approval on some of the proposals we made, those numbers will drop again. We typically went with 24 and 36 hours. And we'd like to get back to that, to knowing that we're cleaning the city, primary streets, routed streets, in 24 hours. And then, this is something I really like to talk about. I do this on the phone calls, when we get phone calls and complaints. I do this in front of neighborhood associations. And of course, I just use this as an educational piece because this is exactly what it is. It's an educational piece, but the only difference is the citizens just don't know where they are on an ABC route. They don't know how long it's going to take. And I can tell you that the perception is everybody is the last street to be plowed, okay? And that's just not true. Not every, it really kind of gets me going a little bit because some of the conversations I have, as you can imagine. But the ABC routes are this. So if you look at the screen and you see that in green, that is one complete route, okay? That's Route 1 in the city of Peoria. We break that route into three routes. So you've got three different sections marked in the light gray, which divided that Route 1 route up into three. And this is where the ABC comes in. This is where we know and we can certainly, I mean, we're not trying to prove it to anybody, but we do like to make sure that people understand they are never going to be first and they're never going to be last, okay? So we'll start with the A route. When that's completed, we go to the B route. When that's completed, we go to the C route. The next storm, sorry, the next storm, we start with the B route and then C and A, and then, of course, the following storm, C, A, B, and then starting over again. So we are always making sure that, and we do track this. So we're always making sure that no one is ever first every time or last every time. And again, I realize people don't know where they're at on the route. And a phone call would, you know, that could be explained. And then parking enforcement. So we have the emergency snow routes, and they're signed. As you can see, one of the signs on the monitor there, they are signed with two or more inches of snow. This particular sign says from 11 PM to 6 AM. That's from the downtown business district, okay? So that's got a little bit of a different twist to it than the snow route signs that are out throughout the city, which are marked. And then, once it goes into effect, it's in effect for 48 hours. The reason for that is, so we come through with the plow and we curb the street, we do a curb-to-curb cleaning. Well, people think, okay, well, okay, they've done my street. Now I can get back out and park on the curb. Well, we hold it to 48 hours because sometimes there's another storm following right up behind it. And you just don't want to have your car in the way because, of course, it talks about fines and it talks about towing and things of that nature. And we don't want to get into that. So we just ask people, you know, to abide by the 48 hours once it goes into effect. And that's an automatic going into effect once there's two or more inches of snow that has been predicted. And again, the 48 hours starts at that particular time when the snow stops. There's other parking bans where the city manager or his designee can order a no parking ban. It could be citywide or in a specified area. And it remains in effect until terminated, okay? So this is one that we have to notify the motorists and we have to communicate that process, which is what we do through our press releases and through the media. And again, violators, there's a fine for that as well. And then there's a restricted parking ban. So we have other options to utilize for parking bans. The city officials can prohibit parking from 9:00 AM to 9:00 AM the following day on specific days. It can be a citywide or a specified area. So what's happening is we're parking, we're allowing parking on one side of the street so we can come through and clear the other side. And then the next day, the odd side or the even side, whichever may apply, there's cars that go to the other side, park on that side of the street, and then we can now clear the opposite side of the street. So we can get clearance without having to have everybody move off the street completely. And that's dictated by the type of storm that we're in. And it explains it here. It's curb-to-curb snow removal, and the parking restrictions are on even-numbered addresses on even-numbered days. And then there are odd-numbered addresses on odd-numbered days. So that's how we utilize the back and forth. All right. So equipment, getting into our equipment. We have several types of pieces of equipment. We have one-ton trucks. We have seven-ton trucks. And we have 14-ton trucks. And we use those in different areas at different, for different type of applications. We have wing plows, which are seven-ton trucks equipped with two plows. So in essence, that's a truck, or that's a route that's basically getting almost two trucks to plow that snow. So the wider streets is where we apply those trucks to. The areas that drift out north and northwest, they get a lot of the wing plows. Those are very effective. We have the industrial snow blower that you see on the picture, on the monitor. And that's used for opening drifts, opening roads that are drifted closed. That's used for snow removal. It can fill a tandem trailer, a tan pickup, I'm sorry. A tractor trailer can fill that trailer in 30 seconds. So it really does have some power. And then, of course, we have a brine maker, which produces brine in-house. We produce our own brine in-house, which is a saltwater solution. And we're producing that for less than 10 cents a gallon. And that's what we do with the pretreat. That's what we do while we're actually salting. We can also apply brine to the salt before it hits the pavement. So we're always geared up to make brine. We actually even have, there's a couple municipalities that have smaller municipalities that aren't equipped to be able to carry brine. They're inquiring now about purchasing brine from us. One other thing I wanted to mention about the fleet is that it is becoming an aging fleet. And we just, you know, we are aware of that. So we are going to really make sure that we are monitoring what we're doing and making sure that we're doing the post-storm inspections consistently so that we can keep that fleet up, okay? So we've got a variety of trucks that have been around a while, but I think we'll be in good shape. The brine for the liquid treatment is efficient up to 20 degrees above zero. And it's used on all primary and routed residential streets deemed hazardous. When I say the residential streets that are deemed hazardous, so we do have residential streets that have hills, curves, inclines, and declines. We do apply brine to those as well. Some of those residential streets are actually on the primary routed street. So they are going to get that treatment. Calcium chloride is effective for lower than 20 degrees, probably down to about zero or so. That is, it's a little bit more abrasive material. It's a liquid material as well. And then the hot brine, which we've kind of termed our calcium chloride and brine combination into a hot brine. So that's something that we produce in-house. We use the brine that we make, as well as the calcium chloride that we purchased. And we combine them at an 80/20 rate. And it'll give us a faster-acting and higher-acting liquid material. And then the commercial sidewalk, the city ordinance for the commercial city sidewalks. There are all commercial property owners are required to remove snow from the public sidewalk adjacent to their property. Six inches of snow that must be cleared within 24 hours. More than six inches of snow, they have to be cleared in 36 hours. And noncompliance, of course, then it's going to bring in the results of fines and penalties and things of that nature. But failure to comply may require the city now to come in and remove the snow and ice on private property. In that case, the property owner will then receive an invoice on a bill for us to come out and do the cleaning of the snow and ice off of their sidewalks. More on the sidewalk snow removal. Snow removal is a basic safety operation. Right now, it's only focused on commercial properties, not the residential properties. So snow shall not be placed on the street or block of fire hydrant or mailboxes as the commercial property owners are moving snow. That actually even applies to residential properties, although we are not enforcing the residential property in terms of a time they have to be cleaned. But we are enforcing the hydrant and the mailboxes that are at the curb, that they do not get snow being dumped to affect and cause an effect. And of course, the one thing that we do in Peoria, in the city of Peoria, is we aim to ensure that the city is safe and walkable. So public information and communications. We have a dedicated communications specialist. News releases are sent to the media, to ECC, neighborhood associations, and others in a group, in a group of people that do receive this on a regular basis. Broadcast media, it includes 20-plus local radio stations. They're ready to interrupt programming for snowstorm updates. Digital billboard messaging is needed. We have actually been able to utilize billboards that were donated, that was donated to us by, I believe it's Adams Outdoor, to wear at the digital billboards at War Memorial and University, Glenn and University. And there may be some others that they actually will put out messages for us if we get into a situation where we are trying to get more information out to the public. It's a great asset. And then, of course, the social media, the winter weather planning updates shared via Facebook, Twitter, and Nextdoor. And that goes out prior to every storm. There are occasions where during the storm, if it's a long-range storm, that we will put out more updates throughout the storm. And then, of course, the city's website. For anybody that wants to get on the website to look up information, and that's being updated as the storms continue, is peoriagov.org. And then, of course, there's e-alert signup available at the website, at peoriagov.org as well. This is just your way of contacting us at Public Works in the event that there's some issues. We've got our main line, 494-8800. There's a hotline that you can call into. It'll be a recorded message. It'll basically tell you what we're doing during the course of this particular storm or whatever storm we're in. It will tell you what our plan is. It'll kind of bring you up to date on what to look forward to, what, you know, what to expect from us. And then the snow call center. That's a center that we get into the large, extremely large snows and the phones are just going, you know, off the hook. Emails are coming in hot and heavy. We actually open up a snow call center out at Drees Lane. And it's basically like a command center that you would have at different locations for different incidences. We have it right at Drees Lane. And then, of course, for messaging, there's the group inbox, publicworks@peoriagov.org. Variety of ways to get in contact with us. And that would be it.
Director Maroon, I have a love-hate relationship with snow, but you and your team always do a fantastic job. And I'm glad you'll have more resources to work with this year. Any questions? Okay, there we go. Councilwoman Beth Jensen?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Director Maroon. I concur with the mayor. You do a very good job. And it's always nice to have you back here explaining how it's going to work before the coming snow. I have a couple questions. One, I'm wondering about two things because I, when we started changing that we wouldn't plow everything, all the residential streets until we completed all the primary streets, has that always been the case?
It's always been the case, yes.
But did we change the amount of snow and the amount of time that we get snow removal done when we were facing cuts and we had to cut the number of routes and the number of drivers?
No, we did not, we did not change that. The only thing we changed is the amount of time it takes that we have to clear the residential streets. It increased from 24 to 36 hours with two or more inches of snow. And then at six inches, it increased to 48 hours for six or more inches of snow. That's the only increase. And that's up from, like I said earlier, 24 and 36 hours.
Was that increase just because of the pandemic and those cuts? Or did we do that prior to the pandemic?
No, we did it with the pandemic because we reduced the number of routes. So we have four less trucks on the street. So we had to make the routes larger, which is now going to take us longer for that individual truck to complete their route.
I'm assuming then the plan for, if the funding passes, to go back to pre-pandemic levels, then this will go back to 24 hours?
That's what we would like to see, yes. Getting back to pre-pandemic and getting back to what we did prior to the pandemic, absolutely.
Okay. And then, I'm not sure, this may be a question for you or the city manager. What would the cost be if we were to implement it? The pre-pandemic levels add the routes now for this current season instead of waiting till 2022? I think that's something we could use Recovery Act money for.
Well, Councilwoman, if I could answer that question. I don't have an answer to the dollar amount and what impact it's going to have on the budget. There will be that. But I can tell you, at this time of the year, it would be quite a mountaintop to climb to change the route from 17 to 21. We're already set. So, I mean, we're hopefully looking at, you know, next season. I mean, we'd like to do that, absolutely. We would love to do that. But the amount of work that it takes to reroute and do all the routing and all the information that goes into the books and the route books and the information that you all receive, I don't see it happening.
Okay. That's very helpful. I know the city manager was going to say something as well.
I, I think that, that there's the staffing piece, but there's also collective bargaining issues, these routes have been bid, so there's, there's other issues that make this more complex than just simply saying that if we had more resources, we could add more staff immediately to go forward with this.
Okay. Do you, could you, do you know ballpark what the cost is?
I don't have the cost figure off. I, I think if you look on the slide that showed the difference in manpower between the number of temp positions and full-time positions, that's roughly the difference. We can give you a ballpark of what it would be. The difficulty, I think, is, is more the operational issue of now going out and hiring staff and going out and, and filling those positions when it's already November right now.
Yeah, I understand. Thank, and how many drivers is it that we would have to hire to do four more routes?
To, to go back to pre-pandemic?
Right.
We would need five full-time staff. If, if we go back to staffing this, the, the number that we were, and then we would have to increase the, the temporary staff by seven more employees.
Okay.
Twenty-two.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Allen?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you for the presentation, sir, this was very, very great to share. Would you be able to send the PowerPoint to us, just so that way we're able to spread this information to our constituents that reach out? And then also too, do you think that maybe you can just create a condensed version that we can share with our constituents with, with like the hotline number, some of the FAQs that were in this, that we can just use on our social media or email to our constituents, just so that way we can help you all, you know, spreading the gospel of snow removal?
Yes, we can work on that, and, and you should have received a, a trifold piece of literature, and that's, hopefully, I mean, we included that this year, so hopefully that would be helpful to have the, the answers to some of the questions that you may receive. But we can work on the, the condensed version as well.
Yeah, definitely, just, uh, we, we got the paper version, but like, if we can have an electronic version of the PowerPoint presentation, and then just like a condensed, you know, one-sheet slide, just an infographic that we can share, that'd be great.
Sure.
Yeah, thank you.
Councilmember Ruck Regal?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you to your team of, of snowfighters. I know even during the rodeo, when we're competing against other communities, we always seem to rise to the top of there, and I think that it just shows the dedication that we have to be able to make for sure that our streets are cleared as quickly as possible and as well as possible. Two things, one, one thing that I, I think this is a great presentation, and I think probably what happens is, once we get that first snowfall, some people sort of forget what we talked about here a little bit, no matter how great the presentation, but if I'm taking one thing away from here, I, I understand communication is what I'm really hearing from you. And so I would assume that what you're asking everybody to do that's listening tonight, or that we talk to, whether it be our neighborhood associations or anybody else, is make sure you go to peoria.gov.org and sign up for those, those email announcements, and that way they can keep up. Would be my one question, correct?
Yes, we do, yeah.
Second of all is, a lot of the information here is kind of in that perfect storm, and I think in the past, sometimes we get some storms that get ice beforehand, and so that gets a little challenging. Could you maybe just address a couple of those situations which may make snow removal less than ideal, just so that our community here kind of understands some of the considerations that you have when it comes to it?
So, some of the challenges are, when we get into the, and, and it actually starts to happen a little later into the season, you know, January, February, maybe even March a little bit, but January and February are typically because the temperatures at that point, and polar vortex is coming in, and a lot of different factors are taking place that, and there's still rain at times, which then, of course, turns to ice, and then, and then there's the snow, and the, one of the challenges is, if we get that rain prior to, we talked about the brine treatment, the pre-treatment of brine. And one thing I didn't mention earlier in the presentation was, we do go out and we do pre-treat, but if we know that rain's in the forecast, it does zero good to apply that product, because the rain's going to wash it off, and it's just going to be gone by the time that the precipitation starts to hit in terms of the ice and the temperatures dropping, and, and so we're, we, there are some challenges, and you're exactly right. I mean, not everything is cut and dry, it absolutely is not. Sometimes we're, we're making decisions, you know, as, as the storm is, is continuing on, and so, the problem with getting the ice and the rain, or even just the ice before the snow, is that the ice will then bond to the pavement. We do try to keep that from happening by using the brine treatment. If, if that works, it's great. If it doesn't, the, as we all know, that there are times when we're challenged with driving down the street, because we've got snowpack and we've got ice underneath it. And then again, that can happen in the reverse fashion, we can have snow first, and then ice come later, and then it, then it just, it just coats it, you know? And now we're, now we're challenged with trying to remove that, and it's, it's just heavier, it's tougher on the equipment, but even for the pavement, it's, it's bonded, and that's where we run into those challenges, but...
Great, well, thank you and your team. I know that with the forecasts that we see out there for this winter, it looks like that we may be seeing you quite a bit out there, so be safe.
Thank you. I do feel really good about the staff that we have, as I said earlier on. We do have some of the best drivers in the state, by the way, now that you mentioned the snow rodeo, and that's, that's, we still have the traveling trophy in our office in the foyer at Drees Lane, so that's, that's proof in the pudding right there.
It's always good to see you guys out there, thank you.
Thanks.
Any other questions, council? Thank you, Director Maroon.
Thank you very much. Talk to you soon.
Oh, sorry, hold it, hold it, before you leave, Councilmember Kelly?
Uh, no questions, Madam Mayor, I just moved to receive and file.
Okay, thank you. Moved by Councilman Kelly to receive and file, seconded by Councilmember Euler. Any other questions? Paul? Thank you, please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
21-313 is a communication from the city manager and the corporation council with a request to adopt an ordinance amending the special service area agreement between the city of Peoria and Westlake Shopping Center, and there is a handout on your desk in yellow of a copy of the agreement, and there is also, also a motion on the floor to adopt an ordinance amending the special service area agreement between the city of Peoria and Westlake Shopping Center.
Councilmember Allen?
Uh, yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I would like to call Mr. Bob Hall to the microphone, just to discuss the SSA.
No objection, Mr. Hall.
Thank you for the privilege of the floor, Mr. Allen and your honor. My name is Bob Hall, I'm an attorney with the firm of Miller, Hall &amp; Triggs in Peoria. I'm also counsel for the Westlake Shopping Center. Just briefly to explain the matter before you, it's pretty simple, it's just asking for your approval to let Morton Community Bank lend an additional $2 million to the SSA for Westlake. That money has, money in the past that has been lent by Morton Community Bank to the SSA has been used for the rehabilitation, redevelopment, and maintenance of the center. We look to continue that and hope to have the progress that we believe you've seen in the past with respect to that center. This, this loan has no liability on the part of the city, it is doing nothing to change the tax rate, the sales tax rate on the SSA. There's no change in the life of the SSA, same amortization, there's really no change, it's just an additional loan. With that said, I'm obviously here to speak for, and ask for your approval of the request, but as a part of doing that, I would like to correct some misconceptions, I think, that came up in the meeting of October 12th, all of which arose because of a non-payment of a storm fee that was attributable to the center. That fee has now been paid. I want to repeat that, the fee has been paid in full. Going back to what I was just saying, as far as the misconceptions go, the suggestion, at least, that a lot of us read from the center side, was that Westlake doesn't pay his bills. Westlake does pay their bills. I can tell you from having our firm work for them for 25 years, they do, and I think if you were to talk to a lot of, of the skilled trades workers around this, this city, you'd find the same thing. Since the inception of the SSA, PJ Hair, a, a union contractor, has had over $21 million of contracts in the rehabilitation of that center. So, there's been a lot of bills paid to a lot of union workers around this town who I think appreciate Westlake for the work it provides. In a, in a, in addition to that, just looking at, not all, all the other fees that have been paid and everything like that, let's just look at kind of the, the revenue which this center does produce for you. Not counting all those other fees, just looking at, for example, sales taxes. After recovering from the pandemic, this center is expecting about $50 million of sales over the next coming year. That translates to about $4.5 million of sales taxes generated by that center. In addition to that, about $400 annually in real estate taxes, not counting in either case, sales tax case or real estate tax case, not counting what's piled on top of that voluntarily by the center and its tenants to help support that SSA account and the maintenance and improvement of that center. So, with, with that statement there that Westlake pays his bills, what happened? I could only say in general terms, it was a misunderstanding, and I hope you understand that, please do understand it. It generally was attributable to when the, the fee first, or the, the stormwater fee first came about. Les Cohen, the main owner of the shopping center and manager and operator, had a discussion with the city manager, and he came away from that thinking that grants were going to be taking care of the storm fee. Understanding or a mistaken assumption? Similarly, it was good two months ago that I wrote the administration, saying what we were coming for, and I asked, are there any thoughts or problems we need to be addressing? Didn't hear anything. So, we had the mistaken assumption that there were no problems, so then when we hear it's due, we were kind of in a quandary. We're in the middle of a big loan closing, and the, the credit lines were closed, and the money was not easily tapable. Since then, the loan has been closed. Banks have lent $27.5 million to this center, not only for refinancing, but for additional improvements to it. Banks don't do that to people they don't think are going to pay. With respect to the SSA account, one of the proposals we had, we could draw down on that account to pay the fees. Some people had the misconception that it's paying taxpayer money. The SSA account is not taxpayer money, any more than any other customer paying a bill to a businessman, and that businessman uses the income from that payment from the customer to pay his expenses such as bills. This is additional real estate tax imposed upon the center and imposed upon, by the tenants, not only in real estate tax, but sales tax. And it's that source from which a lot of the improvements have come. The city has not given Westlake one cent of assistance, and there's not been any burden put on the city because of the economic situation with the, with Westlake. So, with all that said, I would just respectfully request that you approve this, this proposal so we can move on with, on with the continued redevelopment and renovation of that center. Thank you, your honor.
Can you stay, can you stay put just for a minute? Councilman Ruck Regal, did you have questions for Mr. Hall?
Or, just a comment, yes, yes, thank you very much, Madam Mayor. Mr. Hall, thank you for your extra work on these past couple of weeks on this, and also too, for Mr. Cohen as well. We had a, a good meeting over at the center there, and we were able to walk through some things, but I know the past two weeks, you guys have been working on a couple of, of things as well, and I know that it's, with everything with the closing, it was some additional workers to be able to work that stuff in, so thank you very much for your diligence on that. And I think it goes without saying that the experience that that center produces in restaurants, in sales, the options for shopping in the area, is one that's valued, I think, not only by Peoria, but by our surrounding communities as well, and so we just want to be able to do a shout-out for that as well. So, thank you.
Councilman, thank you for the kind remarks, and I want to especially thank you for the special time you spent with, with the ownership of the center and us trying to address these problems.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Hall.
Thank you.
Councilmember Allen?
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor, I echo the, the comments by my colleague, Councilman Ruck Regal. I think we all know the impact that Westlake has on not only District 4, the city of Peoria, but the greater Peoria region as a whole, and so we definitely appreciate your commitment to that, and without further comment, I would like to move for approval.
Moved by Councilmember Allen, seconded by Councilmember Ruck Regal. Any more comments or questions? Please cast your ballots. Motion passes with one nay, Regenbach. Madam Clerk?
21-337 is a communication from Councilmember Zach Euler with a request to direct staff to place a 90-day moratorium on enforcement action related to operating a short-term rental without a special use to allow for those currently operating to come into compliance with the city of Peoria ordinances, and void previously issued citations for failure to obtain a special use prior to operating a short-term rental.
Councilmember Euler?
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. I'm going to start with my motion first, with comments on the other side, and then if it's allowable, I'd like to open the floor up to some public comment on the issue. Move to direct staff to place a 90-day moratorium on enforcement actions related to operating a short-term rental without a special use to allow those currently operating to come into compliance with city of Peoria ordinances, and void previously issued citations for failure to obtain a special use prior to operating a short-term rental, as long as they come into compliance or cease operation in that period.
Everybody got that? Did you hear it clearly? Would you, would you repeat it?
Move to direct staff to place a 90-day moratorium on enforcement action related to operating a short-term rental without a special use to allow those currently operating to come into compliance with city of Peoria ordinances, and previous, and void previously issued citations for failure to obtain a special use prior to operating a short-term rental, as long as they come into compliance or cease operation.
Seconded by Councilmember Ruck Regal.
Okay, a little bit of background here, so several weeks ago, a constituent of the second district reached out to me and said, "I heard things going on in the media related to short-term rentals. I operate short-term rentals, what does this mean for me?" So, to start with, I think, and, well, not think, I know a number of people in our community didn't understand that the short-term rentals were not in an ordinance as allowable, and we were in process of trying to put ordinances around them to make them allowable, to collect taxes on them, and to manage the process. Individual reached out to me to find out what he needs to do to come into compliance. I reached out to Director Doolin to discuss that, helped him begin that process, and without any knowledge of the fact that he already had a fine waiting for him in another mailbox at a property that wasn't pertaining to the one that it was written about, and my response was, surely that's not the case, we're not issuing those fines until we get people through the process, because that was my understanding and what was communicated. Reached out to Director Doolin and found out, in fact, we are, but we're not shutting them down, we're trying to get them through the process. So, we start down that process, I'm told by the director that if by that Friday, he gets his application in, fines will be waived. Well, then, much to our surprise, we find out, without any notice of the first fine, he had a second fine for $6,000, with, in, in my estimate of looking at the information, there's no true basis for how that number was, come about, and no verification of people were actually on the property the number of days that were targeted, and then a notice to shut down, which he did in fact shut his operation down, and put his special use request on pause and go to long-term rental, but it just goes to the, the heart of the issue here, which is confusion over the changes that we... heart of the issue here, which is confusion over the changes that we have gone back and forth over for months on this issue and what we actually passed, what's been communicated to council members on how we're going to work through that process, what's been communicated to the public on that process, how we're going to get everybody through that process, and how we're picking and choosing which people we're going to find and at what level we're going to find them. There's been no consistency in how this has been managed, and just like we've done in other issues, especially the rental registration for landlords, I think we need to press pause on this so that we can work to get everyone in compliance, work with them to get them in compliance, so that everybody is on the same page with changes that we've made and they all receive the same communication, and it's consistent. To say that we should give one person a $6,000 fine and the next person no fine makes no sense to me at all, and I think it would be prudent on us to correct this and work with everyone to get them into compliance and deal with the entire population of this the same way. Thank you.
Welcome. Mr. Manager, may I call on Director Doolin? Director Doolin, essentially, the motion is to place that 90-day moratorium on enforcement action related to the STRs and to dismiss those fines for those owners that come into compliance with the special use or choose not to operate an STR within 90 days. What is your reaction to that?
Yes, Mayor? I think that staff can, you know, ultimately with any citations we write, compliance is the key. I think a key provision there is that we're just encouraging people to come into compliance with the ordinances written. I think that having the citations remain if compliance isn't met provides some protection, but I think that's something staff can do.
Thank you, Director. There may be more questions. Stick around. Questions, comments, council? Councilmember Velpula?
This issue of short-term rentals has become a central topic of our discussions over the past three months. As I said in our, you know, previous meetings, we as a city, I think, should codify relatively liberal policies throughout the city. A city needs to adapt and encourage new business models. Now that we are imposing fines, I think every citizen should be given a fair hearing, since every citizen deserves a second chance, and should be treated as we expect to be treated. If an STR facility is non-compliant, I should give them time to achieve compliance. We should not make it harder than it already is. I believe we should do more to make Peoria a more business-friendly city, rather than scare people away from it by overburdening them. Instead of focusing on a more compact and narrow vision, let's start, you know, focusing on more comprehensive vision. So that's what I wanted to say. Thank you.
Councilman? Councilmember Reganbuck?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, Councilman Euler, for being such a strong voice in this regard. I think, for me, my support for this resolution comes from the fact that many have viewed the action of the enforcement process as punitive, and let's be honest, with the changes that we've made almost weekly, it's really an unfair expectation to expect people to be able to keep up with our ever-changing regulations. We need 90 days in order to get the word out, in order to encourage the compliance that we need, and rather than punitively discourage this kind of investment, we need to make sure that it's regulated properly and that our staff is working, as Dr. Velpula said, to encourage this new business model. So I will be supporting this, and again, thank you, Councilman Euler, for your leadership. Thank you, Madam.
Sure. Councilmember Allen?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Director Doolin, can you talk about how this process of enforcement was marketed to the public or communicated, please?
Yes, thanks, Councilman. You know, I think what staff, so the special use process was adopted in March of 2021. I think at that time, we understood that staff didn't have the technology or the resources in place to actually discover where the short-term rentals were operating. Former Director Black worked with the Finance Department, and we found a vendor who could identify. A lot on these short-term rental sites, the actual addresses aren't identified, so it takes a lot of legwork. The company we've been working with the last two or three months to get the software in place. Once that software was in place, we went through the process to see what properties were operating without a special use, and we started issuing citations for those properties. As I mentioned when the mayor asked the question, ultimately, the goal is compliance, so when we issue those citations, it's ultimately they do get a hearing in front of the hearing officer to determine whether they came into compliance and what that case is, and staff is very happy to work with them if compliance is the end game and work toward that solution. We're not there to punish or be punitive. It's really about the compliance of getting the special use in place. So that's kind of the model we use. We've currently issued 17 citations for failure to obtain a special use before operating a short-term rental. We started with those that require a special use, and then would move to the process of those that can operate without a special use but still need a license that also aren't in compliance. But based on this discussion, that's been paused to see what happens this evening.
Thank you, sir. Anytime that you look to enforce something after it's already been happening for a period of time, and your reactionary, you're going to have challenges of enforcement, and I think that's what we have here now with the ordinance being passed in March, and there were already a number of these short-term rentals already operating here in the city. And then we're hoping that our owners of these short-term rentals are listening to our, either our meetings, or whether it's on the news or the Journal-Star, and so we are hoping that they're hearing this messaging, and that's just not the case. So I do think we have a good opportunity to really define this process. I would like to see us apply some grace, I really do, because I do think that there are some people who really just genuinely didn't know, and I want to assume goodwill on that. So I do appreciate you providing some context on that, Director Doolin, and I'll be supporting this tonight. Thank you.
You're welcome. Councilmember Jensen?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I guess, first of all, I don't, if some people are on the horseshoe are being a little disingenuous. We adopted this ordinance in March, which was six, seven months ago. We haven't made any changes to that ordinance except for the changes that were made about a month ago that added three limitations, three additional limitations upon Mr. Reganbuck's motion. None of these citations are for violations of the newly enacted limitations. These are violations for operating a short-term rental without a special use. My understanding, some of these I'm fairly familiar with because I was getting complaints, and I was, I noticed one of them on Moss Avenue, operating illegally. It was reported to staff. Staff notified the owner, and he still continued to rent, according to Airbnb, a short-term rental, even though he'd been advised that he was in violation of the regulations. He had not applied to get a special use permit, and he continued to flagrantly violate what the city's requirements are. The staff gave him opportunities to apply for a special use. He never even contacted staff back until staff called Airbnb and said he's not complying with the city's regulations. And then Airbnb contacted him, and that's when he finally contacted the staff. Another owner of one of the other properties on here has never even applied for a special use. These aren't people that were just, didn't know the law, and then once the law was explained to them, tried to come in compliance. These are people that were flagrantly violating what the city requires. By putting a moratorium on the city's enforcement, we are undermining the city's authority to enforce their ordinances. This body has never done that in the past. The only time a moratorium is put on an ordinance in the 26 years that I've been in the city, I believe, is when that ordinance was part of a lawsuit against the city. We are in litigation, and it was being challenged on a number of different grounds. This, and I know this, you know, issue has become quite controversial, and it shouldn't be. The people that live in these older neighborhoods should get notice before somebody's allowed to have a short-term rental. That's what we adopted. They should get notice, and they should have an opportunity to provide input. In all 17 of these situations, they were not given that opportunity. And it's not us being anti-business. These are businesses operating in neighborhoods, in residential neighborhoods. This is about the quality life of our neighborhoods, and I implore the council to reconsider those that are thinking of voting for this moratorium. And I hope that we, that you have read some of the letters from some of the people that live next door to some of these short-term rentals that are on this list, and perhaps we can give the opportunity for some individuals here to also address the council and give them the privilege of the floor before we vote on this. Thank you.
You're welcome. Councilmember Ruckregal?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You know, I've got to think back about this process, and this has really been a two-year process that I think that we have drug the city through. We've drug our neighborhoods through, and we've drug our family and friends through. And it's interesting because while I have, on every issue on a, on a short-term rental that we've had discussed over the past couple of weeks, for approval, I've gotten letters and comments about not having an approval for that. But I've also gotten just as many for approval from neighbors who are afraid to be able to say that, because there are certain people in the neighborhoods who have taken it upon themselves to give their voice and not let everybody be heard. And I think everybody deserves to be heard on this, because this is not a clear-cut issue on how this operates. Councilmember Allen made some very, very good points about where we are in this process. And it reminds me that not too long ago, well, actually, it really was long ago if I think about it, as we put in a landlord registration, it was not one year, it was not two years, it was three years, that a neighborhood advocate, bar none, probably some of the hardest-working ones, Marge Kleis and myself, along with Paul Massick, would get in a car, and we would drive our neighborhood, as every neighborhood would do in the Westbluff, and be able to bring in a list of the non-conforming that weren't on the landlord registration. And we worked with the city. Yet it wasn't about the fine, and it didn't happen overnight. And it was three years that we walked, we were in a car together, working on that, because it takes time. We have a choice here. This is about compliance, which is what we're going for, because it's not just about the dollars. It's about making sure these are safe environments for people and a contributing piece to the neighborhoods. And there are views on both sides, and I think we do have to protect our neighborhoods. But we also aren't looking for a revenue grab. And when you're talking about $6,000, when, to be really honest, I don't know that a couple of weeks ago, every council member on here could have probably laid out where we are on short-term rentals, because we've confused the public, much less ourselves. And I think we have, we have an opportunity here to do the right thing. Is it, is it that we couldn't enforce these? No, we could. But sometimes there's a greater message to be given, which is the fact that, you know what? Let's own the fact that we've made this process hard, and we also want to be able to balance our neighborhood interests with those. And these aren't people from out of town. These are our friends and our neighbors. Should they have, should they have put in the application? Probably so, yes, so. But as we know, sometimes the communication gets lost from this horseshoe out into the public. And that's why I think the 90 days gives us enough time, and it, I think, gives one final piece to say, get your application in. But it also shows that we're willing to be able to work with our neighborhood partners. I would hope, in the greater sense, that both sides on this short-term rental side take a step back and a breath and realize that we are friends and neighbors. Because I'll be honest, and the calls that I've gotten from people who live next door to some of these are also saying, please don't fine them. I'm glad they're here, but I'm afraid to speak up. I've also gotten calls that say, please, fine them. So I've gotten both sides, but it's not clear-cut. But the thing that I think we need to do is we need to be better. This council needs to be better about trying to divide a city on a short-term rental issue as we have done over the past, because at the end of the day, we all love Peoria. At the end of the day, we want Peoria to thrive. And I think sometimes we've got to be able to work together, because it is not about punishment. It is not about a revenue drive. This is about compliance. So I will be supporting this, and I hope that the rest of my council will see that we need to be able to work with those that we call part of our community.
Councilmember Kelly?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I will be supporting this also. I just would like to remind the council that if, in the next 90 days, we get the assumed number of short-term rentals that there are out there, we're going to have 10 to 20 applications per council meeting, because this is a special use, something I was not crazy about at all. But we're going to be very busy, but I do want to support Councilman Euler's motion. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Welcome. I hope you're wrong about that number. Councilmember Jackson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, I can appreciate comments from everybody on the horseshoe. I must say, I'm a little confused. I mean, I'm not against short-term rentals, but I've also, I live in the district where we don't have any protections against it, yet I have heard about some operating prior to the city adopting the ordinance in March. And I guess my question is, I'm just wondering, will these individuals come forth and get the licenses? And if they don't, what does that do for concerns we had about numbers, limitations? Because, you know, we talked about 3% and things of that nature, but I'm just afraid that if we don't do our due diligence in terms of enforcement, you know, we could find ourselves in a situation where we may see 6% or 7% or 8% in districts like mine, where I've heard about some operating prior to the city's ordinance. And so I'm just kind of confused as to what's it going to take to get these individuals to willingly come forward? And then on the other hand, I mean, do we have the staff to adequately do the type of enforcement that we need to do to make sure that folks are in compliance?
Understanding is if, after 90 days, they're not in compliance, the fines will be imposed or enforcement will be enacted.
Well, I'm just concerned about those who we have not identified yet, and there are some out there that we have not identified as short-term rentals, that are operating as short-term rentals.
You're welcome. Councilmember Greer?
My fellow counselors, we must be a city with laws that are applied equally to all. We don't have application for, one set of application for the little people, quote-unquote. And then another... And then another set of application for the connected people. That's where we are tonight. As for it being two or three years in the making with the STRs, we just got out of a pandemic. That's impossible. Kinds of erroneous comments being made tonight, and I'm going to call you on it. Director Doolin, we have in front of us on the citations issued, we have one address that's mentioned twice. Why is that?
We had previously, uh, issued them a notice, uh, letting them know they needed to register. After they didn't, we wrote one citation. After not hearing back, we wrote an additional citation.
Did staff at any time speak to the owner of that property and indicate to cease and desist? And then have to go to Airbnb?
Uh, before the citations, uh, the citations were written before we had any contact with, uh, the applicant.
So the day that the police department had to be called because the senior citizen next door, her drive was blocked, where was that in the sequence of conversation that city officials had with this would-be petitioner?
That was after Airbnb had contacted them, uh, after the city contacted Airbnb, uh, letting him know he was not in compliance.
So in other words, not all of the people who are not in compliance are similarly situated in terms of their defiance of our ordinance. We have a special use process. Embedded in it is notification to neighbors. And they may not operate until such time as they have gone through the special use And we have some folks who think they are above the law and you are enabling them. Now, my recommendation, lest the council wants to become a lawless council, a council that condones this defiance of the police. And code enforcement is a police function. My recommendation is staff does what it should do, working with the people who have been in violation. If they need to go to the hearing officer, if staff feels there are mitigating circumstances, then at that point, the hearing officer can take that into account and decide if that $6,000 fine is justified or not. But for you guys to get in here and waive all this, police chief, next thing you know, we're going to be telling you to just vacate all the tickets because we've had a lot of speeders and doesn't matter if you warn the same person several times, we're just going to dismiss it. Because this supreme body here thinks that's the right thing to do. What a lawless council we would be if we did that. So the way this motion is written and the way it's been recited, I suppose, I'm, I think what's here is pretty innocuous, except for the part that says, forgive people who have violated the rules and who have been noticed and told to stop. That's the part I can't go along with. So if we had a refinement of that, I'd go along with it because it would be eminently reasonable. But the poison pill is at the end. Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome. Any other comments? Councilmember Allen?
Thank you, thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, Director Doolin, of the 17 that are featured here, how many would you have said have now attempted to come forward and go through the process of contacting you all to rectify the situation? From a percentage standpoint?
I'm looking at the list and I think maybe three or four have come in.
Thank you.
Three or four of 17, uh, I don't know the percentage off my head. 20%.
Director, should this motion pass, what would be the, the next steps on staff on, on notifying?
Uh, Mayor, should this motion pass, uh, all of the, all of these citations, uh, I also want to point out have it pending hearing. Uh, they have not gone before the hearing officer, so none of them have been found guilty of operating a short-term rental or any fines have been in place yet. Uh, that's ultimately the decision of the hearing officer after both sides, um, do their case. If this would pass tonight, um, all of those cases would be continued for 90 days, uh, pending compliance. Um, a, as long as they come into compliance and, and don't operate illegally, those citations would be voided and dismissed from my understanding of the amendment Councilman Euler made. Further, we would take this list and, and any additional ones that we feel there's another, probably 30 or 40 that were, we'd be in the process of bringing in compliance. Within two weeks, we'd send them all notice that they need to come into compliance with our codes, whether that's obtaining a special use or obtaining a special use and a license. Uh, we would document that notification to ensure that after the 90 days, if citations are written, uh, we have ample proof to show that we did provide them notice initially and, and they didn't comply and that's why the citations were written.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, Council, Council Kapustka, would you say that that's the legal, would you agree from a legal standpoint?
Correct. And just to expand on the court date, the two citations that were issued on September 22nd that are toward the bottom of your list were actually scheduled before the hearing officer this morning. Out of respect for the discussion that we anticipated occurring tonight, we did reschedule those two matters until December 28th. All the other cases are scheduled to be heard before the hearing officer on November 16th.
Thank you. Councilmember, uh, Ruckregel?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, question for Director Doolin. If this were to pass tonight, and I think, you know, the, the conversation that I think we all agree on is about compliance. If this were to pass tonight, can you give us the date that 90 days is so that we can say, this is the date? It's not one day after, it's not two days after, that this is the date. Can you tell us what that day on the calendar is?
Uh, yes, sir, if you'd give me a minute.
Think you'd get some help, Director?
I'm date counting in my, in my month right now.
I believe that date would be February 1st.
February 1st, 2022. Did, did you confirm that, counsel? Looks like you were adding.
I asked Siri, but yes, I think February 1st, 2022 is correct.
Okay. Thank you.
February, or February 1st is a nice day to be able to remember, so that's convenient if so. If, if that's 90 days, then, then we know it all here and hopefully, um, as any of our communication that goes out, that is the day that those who were involved in short-term rentals know that that is the day. Thank you.
Welcome. Councilmember Euler?
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. I just wanted to take a moment to thank Director Doolin, Doolin for polishing up this and trying to come up with what would be a solid process, um, at the end of this discussion whereby we would notify individuals regarding coming into compliance before we would find them. Unfortunately, that didn't quite work out that way here, but that's, you know, lesson learned sometimes when we change things and being a government body that protects the citizens and taxpayers, I think it's important for us to take a step back when we don't properly notice and try to work with our citizens to fix that rather than find and enforce first. Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Greb?
Uh, Director Doolin, were all of these folks not properly noticed?
Uh, a, a large majority of the ones on the list, uh, we issued citations hoping to get compliance, uh, with the understanding that if they would have came in and discussed it with us, that's when it would have went to the hearing and we would have presented that. Uh, there are a couple addresses on the list that did get noticed previously before citations were issued.
So it is patently false to state that all these folks just didn't know what the rules were. They knew what the rules were in many cases and they chose not to comply. Uh, counsel, you're getting into very, very dangerous ground now. I've never been part of a council that has allowed this type of lawlessness. And with the consent of the council, I'd like to hear what some of the experiences have been in the second district. I can't speak for the other ones.
Do you have anybody in particular?
Sure.
Councilman?
I do believe the address of 1005 West Moss Avenue comes to mind because it's been brought to my attention scores of times, scores of times, in the past several weeks. And we've had enforcement action occurring at that address. And one councilman wants to say, oh, a $6,000 fine, this person didn't deserve it. Well, let's, let's hear what was going on. Because if all you want to be a Judge Mathis, you better hear the whole story before you vote. Otherwise, you're going to be embarrassed.
Who would you like to recognize?
Uh, I believe we have, um, two people here to address 1005 West Moss Avenue. And, uh, I think we have one who is getting up right now, um, can identify himself.
Yes, sir. Please give us your name and address.
My name is Richard Blanco and I live at 1011 West Moss Avenue and two doors away from 1005. I moved to Peoria about a year and a half ago from Los Angeles. And I gotta say, in that short amount of time, I absolutely love it here. It is unlike anything I've seen before. What attracted me to this town was the exquisite historic homes in the district that I live. The cost of living in comparison to Los Angeles, there's no comparison. But really what made me understand the value of this place is its community and it's the community of people. And one of those people is my next-door neighbor, Mrs. Ott, lives at 1007. And in this time, I've come to understand that this is a significant person to consider, perhaps one of the little people that's been mentioned. Mr. and Mrs. Ott moved to Moss Avenue in 1967, 54 years ago. She continues to live in that home today. The issue at hand here is the fact that it is a shared driveway. That particular residence has a negative impact on her, her family, both from a personal safety standpoint and from the future value of that home and to the estate of their family. That is my concern. I personally have seen up to four or five different out-of-state vehicles parked in front of that house. It's also my understanding that the owner of this property owns multiple properties, other, uh, commercial property, in which case they would be familiar with this process. The fact that the ordinance in March stated that non-owner-occupied residences required special use, that was at the beginning. This is not something that is news to someone who has already been operating this type of, uh, business. So ignorance, in my view, is not an excuse. So the fact that we are not applying the, um, enforcement of that suggests that this may continue. And that's something that concerns me. It concerns me as a new resident here and it concerns me for the members of our community that are the foundation, the bricks of what made this town great. So I would encourage you to seriously consider, not that all short-term rentals are a problem, I actually understand their value. I think they're a huge benefit to attract people. Give them a sample, give them a taste. Of course, they're going to want to live here. But the issue at hand is that each one should be evaluated on its own merits. And in this particular case, it requires a lot more diligence and understanding and enforcing that. I thank you for your time.
Hi, my name is, uh, Bill Ott. Uh, my mother lives at 1007 West Moss. Uh, the only thing I really want to add on to what Rick, uh, has to say there is, my mother is very frightened right now. Uh, she has seen multiple people over there and that's a big concern of mine. Uh, so I go to see her, oh, three or four times a week, uh, but she is definitely frightened and, and that's a big, uh, worry for me and obviously for her, so just wanted to add that. Thank you.
Councilman Greb, did you have someone else?
Um, I do not unless there would be someone else who would like to speak. I think, I think the president of the West Bluff Council is here.
Good evening, Mayor Ali. Good evening, council. My name's Conrad Stennett. I live at 1027 North Underhill Street, uh, in Peoria, the West Bluff. Um, I'm the, I'm coming to you tonight as the president of the West Bluff Council. A few of you are members of the West Bluff Council at one time. Uh, we comprise the eight great, uh, West Bluff neighborhood associations, Bradley University and the West, uh, Main Merchants Association. We recently had our last meeting, we evaluated, uh, short-term rentals. They do not fit into our strategy. Our strategy has always been to increase homeownership and to focus on, on occupancy within the West Bluff. This is an ongoing and long-term goal. Uh, we have never, and I've, I've done my research on it, we've never supported rentals at all, both long-term and short-term. There are things that we deal with. Uh, our rental registration that, uh, Councilman Ruckregel was talking about earlier, uh, initiatives were to try to curb that in and, uh, focus on, uh, getting to know those who are actually operating businesses within our neighborhood. So, um, we focus on that, so therefore, short-term rentals are, are don't fit into that strategy, as I said earlier. Uh, the Uplands actually has a goal, uh, to become a, uh, single-family neighborhood once again, uh, something that short-term rentals don't fit in with, unfortunately. Uh, some were approved in that. Some were approved in that. So we take a look at this and take a look also at the motion at hand. While I respect and do actually like our Councilman Euler, I disagree with him on this issue. The approach that he's taking today is like using a blowtorch to light a candle. We should use our discretionary power that you have and the staff has to bring people into compliance, but those who are thumbing their noses at the ordinances and the law and refusing to comply, they should be penalized in some way. You will not be respected if you let things like this slide. Thank you very much.
You're welcome, Mr. Stenit.
That is all, Mayor Ali. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Quick question, Director Doolin. During this 90-day period, as you continue to get complaints or witness violations, will you be keeping track?
Mayor, yes, we will. And I think the other thing that we'll make sure to do is all of these that need special uses will still have to come before the planning and zoning commission and come before council. We will make sure to include any of that additional information on complaints and issues or problems that we have within that case, and that information will be presented to council as well.
Thank you. Councilmember Jensen.
Thank you, Mayor Ali. I want to clarify something with you, Director Doolin. It's my understanding from what you said when you were answering Councilman Grab's questions, that all of these individuals, when they get the initial citation, the purpose of doing that is to get them to comply and get a special use permit, you said. And it's my understanding that if they had come in and then applied for the special use, the staff would have recommended that the citations be dismissed. Isn't that correct?
Each case is a case-by-case basis, depending on other circumstances. For the most part, with a lot of our citations for first-time offenders, those that heed the initial ticket warning, we generally support in front of the hearing officer, whether that fine be eliminated or reduced based on those circumstances.
But the catch here is, I believe when you answered Councilman Allen's questions, only three or four owners on this entire list of 17 have actually contacted the city and started to apply for the special use process, correct?
I don't know that exact number. I can get back to council on that. Just looking quickly at the list, I know of three or four. Based on the timing of the citations that did go out, we did receive some additional calls, so it might be slightly more than that, but there are some on the list that have not reached out since the citation was issued.
And one more question. The citations actually advise the owner that they need to get an STR license or a special use permit, correct?
Well, the citation is actually a citation for failure to have a license as required by the ordinance. Then they often contact staff who wrote the citation, and we walk them through the process, whether they need to talk to the accounts receivable department to just obtain a license, or we refer them to one of our planners who will walk them through the special use process.
But they're notified when they get the citation that they need to have a license?
Yes.
I just think, I mean, like Councilman Grab says, we're walking down, opening up the door, it's a slippery slope. These individuals were not complying with the law. It's not confusing. Ignorance is not a defense of the law. When I was prosecuting these ordinance violations 25 years ago, 26 years ago, we didn't give people, we didn't, we would be open, just like the staff would here. If they're coming into compliance, they're making an attempt, they're going to apply for a special use, then we could recommend dismissal. But most of the people here didn't do that. And so we're giving them a break, like Councilman Grab said, because they are connected, because they know somebody on the council who I wouldn't be surprised told them not to worry about it. We'll get it dismissed, or we'll get a moratorium on it. That's not how we should be enforcing our laws. It's not how we should be respecting our staff and treating our staff. And it's also not what should be done with regards to this specific case that I'm familiar with, to the one on 1005 Moss. I've walked by and counted nine unrelated 18- to 20-year-old kids leaving on Monday morning, getting into two out-of-town cars on more than one occasion. And it's not fair to Mrs. Ott, who's lived in that house for 54 years, to have this person just get a pass. So I hope that the rest of the council will consider this and not adopt this moratorium.
Councilmember Euler.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. As has been implied, or I guess opposite how it's been implied here tonight, some of these folks are here in the audience tonight and willing to speak. They are not in hiding from this and trying to avoid being caught or addressed. And the 10005, definitely the owners have the opportunity and should speak to this topic, but when they were told to cease and desist on this, they turned it into a long-term rental, which has been my fear with this all along. Now there is less regulation, now they have more flexibility to do the things that are frustrating to the neighbors, and we have now encouraged them to do so. So I would like to call the owners of 1005 West Moss to the podium.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, City Councilmen and Women, dear members of the community. We heard a lot of ways that we're calling.
Please give us your names, your names and addresses.
Absolutely. My name is Dmitry Atanasov, and this is my wife.
Dr. Kaila Sierra.
Thank you very much. Or as we were called, erglier fragrant violators or connected people. I can tell you that it's not the case. We are very good members of this community. We moved here about four and a half years ago from Florida, and we fell in love with what Peoria had to offer. As it was mentioned earlier, we do have three short-term rental properties. Our first two started operating, okay, I'll speak closer. Our first two properties started operating more than a year ago. So we were truly not aware of the changes that have taken place. Now, when it comes to the notices of violation that were sent to 1005 West Moss, I would like to mention the same thing that the Councilman Allen mentioned earlier about the way the city communicates with the members of the community. We truly did not receive that notice. We did not read it. We were not aware that there was any issue. The way that we found out that there was an issue with our property was when we were contacted by Airbnb on the 12th of October at 10:00 a.m. On that day, within a couple hours, I personally came in the city, and I asked to meet Joe Dolan. At that time, I expressed desire to file a short-term license application for all three of our properties, and I started that process. We have both been very compliant, and to our surprise, we received a second fine of $6,000 that was mailed to a different property address of ours. The fine arrived on 424 West Dubé Court. The fine was put in a certified mail envelope, but it was not certified mailed. The date of that fine was October 13th, or one day after we came to the city. Another thing that is visible in that fine is the list of all our addresses, including our personal address, and those are the addresses that I provided to the city when I came forward looking to comply. I don't want to take the time of the city council meeting tonight, but as I have communicated with my councilman, Mr. Grab, our goal here is to have the public support and the support of the city of what we're doing. That's why we have asked for deferment on Moss Avenue, on the hearing from Moss Avenue, until we can work with the community and with the neighbors to get support, so that we can explain what we're doing and why we're doing it and how we're doing it, and in what ways it benefits not only the immediate neighbors, but also the community as a whole. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Councilman Euler.
That's all.
Someone else?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any more questions or comments? Councilmember Grab.
Director Doolin, it seems to me, then, our city process of notifying owners is not intact or operating correctly based on what we just heard.
As the property was registered, we sent notice to the actual property, 1005 Moss, to start the process as, back when we first learned about the process. The citations, if multiple addresses were issued, would have likely been sent to them. I don't have the case in front of me exactly where to serve. We go through a process to try to make sure the owner gets the notification at an address. Sometimes when multiple addresses are issued, and because the property's not registered with us, it's hard to know exactly which one is their home address versus just the property they own.
And at some point, didn't the assistant director speak to him?
She was the first one who spoke to him initially.
What was the date?
I'm sorry, what was that, sir?
What was the date?
I don't know off the top of my head. I assume the date that he mentioned, and he came to City Hall to fill out the application, he spoke to the assistant director. So the 12th or the 13th?
Because no one in this body wants anyone to be treated unfairly or not to get proper notice. And based on my understanding of the way staff comported itself, that was not the case. We were doing everything we possibly could to communicate, not only by mail, but also through our staff. So I'm not going to uphold any process that is sloppy on the part of our staff. And you've given me no reason to believe that our staff was sloppy and didn't give proper notice to cease and desist at that address, and that only after a large amount of contact with the city, including the police department called to go out there because of blocking of the drive, did we get any compliance at all. Am I right or wrong? It's just either yes or no.
Finish, Councilman.
Well, I asked a question.
Well, I don't know that he should respond to.
Well, I'll tell you what, if this city cannot respond because it didn't have its ducks lined up.
I'm sorry, sir, was that directed toward me?
Of course.
Oh, then, yes, it was after the driveway was blocked and the police had to visit the property along with additional contact to the owner. Then after that, he ceased and no longer rented the property as a short-term rental.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Regenbach.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. There's so much that could be said, but I just think regarding the citation as our notification to our citizens that there's a new law in effect that they violated is a little awkward, to say the least. But I think enough has been said from us councilmembers. I do have one more citizen, the owner of 5918 North Elm, Mr. Bill Quann, that would like to address this with your concurrence.
Thank you, City Council. Thank you for this moment. I'm not a full-airtime Airbnber. I just did this because I have a house I've been trying to sell, and I wanted, it's a nice house, and I wanted to have people who want an opportunity to utilize a beautiful house to see how beautiful Peoria can be in a nice area. I've tried to be respectful, made sure the terms of these rentals were structured in a way that they were not for parties, you know, shindigs and stuff, I mean, other than, you know, family affairs and such like that. Mr. Grab, I appreciate you're looking at both sides, with the city and for the people. And I do understand everyone's wishes for each community and the neighborhoods, but I will tell you, the big issue, I think, is not whether, that's a discussion that the process will figure out where the Airbnb is allowed in that area for special use. The issue, and I think this is what Mr. Euler and Mr. Regenbach have brought up, is the fact that I was one of those people that got a fine, and as soon as I got that, I contacted my attorney to have him look into it. But before we could even have the date, which I believe was today for my hearing, I got a second one. No one contacted me. I got a second, no one, Airbnb never contacted me. I got a second penalty from the city, a fine for $6,000, without even being able to address the first one. And I think that goes to the nature of what this whole argument is, is we want to have a fair statement. And I appreciate that Councilwoman Jensen and Councilman Grab want to do what's right for the city, but if the process is not fair and it's more punitive than it is to try to work with the people of this community, to me, that's an issue. And I think that's all that we're asking, is let's fix this. We're all human beings, but the issue is, this process is not smooth yet. And I don't blame the city. They are working hard to take care of our citizens, and I would like to make sure that this process moves forward. I will come into compliance one way or another. I have done the best I can to provide a nice home in this community. I used to own 12 properties, approximately. I'm down to three. And it's because the nature of our community, and I'm trying to figure out how to keep the city, as Councilman Velpula said, be on the edge of growing and having more fruitful future. And that's what I'd like to see. So I just wanted to say to your, Mr. Grab, I got two bills, or whatever you want to call it, and didn't have a chance to even come to the first hearing. So there's definitely something that is an issue. And no one, and one last thing, Councilwoman Jensen, I appreciate, if you had these letters, someone would have called me, because I would have addressed them at that time. I got the letters only, so.
Mr. Quann, give us your address for the record, please.
My home address is 408 West Raven Woods.
Thank you. Has to be recognized.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just one final comment. I think what Mr. Quann just said is a very telling part about some of the assumptions that have been made about the list of people here. He received this citation that was issued on 9/22 with the court date of today. So why would he respond before the court date? I mean, isn't, that's kind of the logical process, I would venture. So I think we need to be careful. I think we erred in March when we passed this without allowing a bridge of compliance to take place then. This is a whole new registration process for the community, for the people who have operated these in the past. So I will continue to support the resolution before us. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Ruckregel.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And after my comments, I'm going to ask that we call the vote, but I think, hopefully, we learned an important lesson today, and I think it's a lesson for the council. We did a disservice to some people who we accused without knowing their intent. I can tell you from my research on the subject, I knew that there were some problems in the process, because I reached out and talked to them. I'm not, I don't know what other work everybody else does, that every councilperson does their own work and research on an issue. But that's why I came in here with knowing where my position was, because I knew that we had a problem in the process. I don't need to call out city staff for that, because we are understaffed throughout our city, and we're doing a lot. And that's why we're all in this, to be able to work together. But I think we also owe it to our citizens. But I think we also owe it to our citizens not to be using, frankly, mean, and I'll leave it at that, or bullying comments to our citizens and talking about intent. And if they weren't here to be able to address, those would be the ones that are in the record, the permanent record, the records that sit over there for the entirety of our history of this city. We're better than that. And I think that we can have discussions around this horseshoe without doing what we ask the smallest kids in our school not to do, bullying each other and bullying our citizens. Let's have a real conversation from now on. Let's get the facts and let's stick to the real issues. And with that, I would ask that, are we ready for the question?
We have a final comment from Councilmember Grab.
Manager Ehrich, this procedure that has just been described as being so inept, were you aware that it was this inept? And is this true? Well, staff trying to bully?
Point of order. I think the question's been called. I think we need to vote on whether to...
I'm going to allow this last comment, and we're gonna, we're gonna vote.
Well, I don't, I don't believe that staff was, was bullying anyone. I think that staff, you know, notified property owners that they had Airbnbs or STRs that we were looking at, at regulating, and they were sent notice of that. And then if they were still operating and there was a complaint, we filed an enforcement or a enforcement action against them, a ticket saying that you're operating without having a license. I think that's what the director has mentioned, and that's the process that we were utilizing. There have been conversations with, with those property owners that were sent those notices, some as, as late as last weekend about the cases that were coming up this week in order to say that, that, you know, you need to come into compliance. That's all we're seeking, that's all our staff is seeking to do.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I never said our city's... I said we did, not his council.
Adjectives for our citizens about their intent, talking about their actions, not staff. We did tonight. In the discussion of this, we owe our citizens better. Do not misinterpret my words. I did not say city staff did it. We did it around this horseshoe.
Motion passes. Three nays. Madam Clerk?
21-317 is a communication from the city manager and finance director comptroller with a request to receive and file the 2022-2023 biennial budget. And on your desk, there are several handouts with report backs part two, green projects report, report backs part three, and I believe there is a list of proposed motions for this evening.
Manager?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, we, we do have several items that were handed out to you this evening, were sent via email over the course of the weekend. I want to thank all the staff that worked very hard to put this information together for you over the last week. We do have the, the first report backs from part two. Councilman Regenbach had asked about Wisconsin Avenue. That's included in the first report back, item two, number one. Councilman Ruck Regal had asked about the police and fire pension liabilities. What were they when the pension fee was established? What are they now? That was included as a report back number two-two. Councilman Ruck Regal also asked about 20 parcels and give us an estimate of what the change in property taxes, pension fees, and stormwater fees, and what does that percentage increase annually? That is included as report back number three. We have a couple of seven-year budget estimates at Councilman Ruck Regal's request. Staff wanted to put those together, and we can certainly talk about those this evening if council so desires. The scope of the, of the sewer lining in Rolling Acres was, was from Councilman Allen. That's report back number two-five. The fire department budget for 2018 through 2020 and the overtime usage came from Councilman Regenbach via email, and that was report back number two-six. And then Councilwoman Jensen had asked for a summary of the sustainability efforts that the city has done, and we put together just some overall comments about this very quickly, and, and then staff did, from Public Works, did a nice job of kind of compiling and documenting some of the, the green and sustainable projects that we've been working on as report back number two-seven. Councilman Ruck Regal, over the weekend, had asked another question about how the city manages overtime, and we put that information together as report back number three-one as well. We also have a series of nine motions that we'd like to discuss with you and ask that council would consider based upon the report backs, as well as some of the recently received grants that the city has received. We'd like to make sure that those get included in the budget, as well as a couple of expenses that I'll be happy to talk through as we work through those motions. But, but, Madam Mayor, if there, if, if there are questions about the report backs, maybe we can answer those first before we jump into the motions or however you'd, you know, you'd like to handle them.
Sure, there may be some follow-up questions relative to the report backs. Councilmember Regenbach?
Madam Mayor, Mr. Manager, if you would look at the question six on the part two report backs, the one I asked about overtime usage in the fire department, and then the actual budget, because we've, we've heard anecdotally repeatedly that they've ended up with a large surplus the last number of years, but this looks like otherwise.
Yeah, so, so in 2018, they did have a surplus. 2019, the budget came in pretty much on target, and then in 2020, just based upon the, the amount of overtime usage that we had during that period of time, the numbers were a little higher from, from the department. This year's budget, they are trending at a much lower rate, and I think that, that we should be able to, to manage that budget through the course of the, the rest of this year and still see that they'll be able to, to come in under budget and living within their appropriation authority.
But in, in the last three years, 2018, that's $137,000, right? So...
$137,000 to the positive.
Right.
Right.
So, so there was never a, a, a large windfall or unexpent, unused dollars in their budget in these last three years at least?
No, I, I think that, that what I said last week was that, that based upon their current spending trends, that they should be able to, even with the change that was made to the staffing levels, they should be able to live within their appropriation authority through the end of the year.
And I, I understand, I'm not questioning this year's, but I just, no, it had been brought up that, that they had had a million-dollar surplus in one of these last out years, and the numbers don't back that up.
I don't believe so.
All right. And, and you, you stand by your comment that the, the budget would allow the addition of these additional firefighters for this year?
It, it will, and, and if towards the end of the year that, that they, they can't live within that, that authority, they're going to have to, to shut off the overtime, and they're going to have to turn it down, and we'll have to, to go with one less machine on the street. They'll have to live within their appropriation authority.
Thank you. It was that net number that I was really curious about also, so I appreciate the information. Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome. Councilmember Ruck Regal?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, city manager, for, for putting these report backs together and so quickly. Seems like when we're meeting every week, there's less and less time to be able to put that back, and your, your staff does amazing work on being able to make sure we get this data. On, on question two, and I just, I'm, I'm looking here at the second chart. It looks like in 2018, our total net pension liability between fire and police was just over $333 million. And we, that is the year that we first put in the, the pension fee to be able to help curb this. And at that time, we said that we would make strides to be able to somehow start to manage this pension because we, we've, and you've been very upfront about this, this is one of the things that is standing with every step that we take as a city, is what that pension liability looks like. But it seems like even with that pension fee, that really the only thing the pension fee did was keep us from crossing the $400,000 mark within three years of net pension liability. So we have an extra $63 million of pension liability from where we were three years ago.
You do.
And the graphs that show, that, that you put together for us, show that that continues to increase, and that is one of the hardest things that we have facing our city, correct?
It's a matter of resources that this council needs to grapple with, how many resources you're willing to put in when you're balancing that with the needs of current resources that are delivering services. But the reality of the situation is, there's other factors that are involved, such as the investment returns that the pension funds make, that during that period of time, they get smoothed out over a five-year period. When there's, when there are declines during that five-year period, we have to make up that difference in the unfunded liabilities as well. In the good years, and over the last couple of years, we've seen, and fortunately through the first nine months of this year, we've seen that, that the numbers are up because the, the markets are up, that, that our returns are getting better. So that should moderate a little bit over the next, over the next couple of years as we look to this chart over the next two or three years, because you're going to have that smoothing of those returns that you've seen. But the real issue...
Would that be if the market continues to be strong?
If the markets, well, it, the markets have been strong for three years, so you're going to capture that for three years right now, that you're going to have, that you didn't have three years ago. It's a five-year smoothing of these dollars that comes in that you have to take into effect with when you have strong returns or bad returns. You, the bad returns stick with you for five years, the good returns also stick with you for five years.
Would, would you anticipate, would you anticipate that smoothing out to mitigate the $63 million that we've incurred?
It's going to mitigate some, whether or not it's going to, going to mitigate all of that, I don't know. I do think that what you're going to see, though, is, is the continued need for resources to go into our pension funds in order to... You have 19 years to amortize this unfunded liability of $396 million. That's the challenge, is that, is that each year, your amortization period gets smaller, so you have to pay more towards closing that off. So that's another issue that we have to face with this.
So what I'm hearing, if we go back to an earlier discussion tonight, and, which I think was very valid, is once people get notice of things, taking action right away, I think is, is the, the rule of order, that we have to act on it. Otherwise, it gets away from us. It seems like you've been giving us notice for many years, that this is something that is standing in front of us as a city, and within three years now, it has grown an extra $63 million. We are almost at $400 million pension liability just with those two pension funds. I, I agree, the market can do great things, but the market can also correct itself, and I look towards buying our investors, that we've got two of them on that side of the room, you know, and, and I'll, I'm not seeing their heads nod one way or the other, and I'm sure that I will get a lecture on their thoughts on where the market goes after this. But I appreciate your work on that. On, on question number three, and, and I'm glad you only did 20 parcels, I had actually asked for 20 parcels per, per district, and part of that is, I think that when we look into it, we're going to see that some districts or some parcels are hit a lot heavier than others based on their valuation for, for their property taxes, because we're going to see an elevated there. But for those 20 that you estimated, could you provide those for us? Could you, could you send us those 20 so that we could see them? And, and you could cross out the property ID numbers or whatever.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll just give you property number one and the assessed value, so you could see it that way. We don't have to, yes.
And if you could put which district they're in?
Yes.
Okay, that'll be great. And on the overtime, thank you for putting that together.
Councilman Ruck Regal mentioned pension liability, and Mr. Manager, next week's agenda will actually have the, the public safety pension fee, the fact that it's scheduled to sunset at the end of this...
This year.
Calendar year.
Yes, that's correct. And so, so what we would plan, there were two fees that we recommended taking action on as part of the budget. We would bring those back for council's consideration at next week's agenda, and that would include the public safety pension fee and extending that, and then also freezing the stormwater utility rates. They're scheduled this year for a CPI increase, and so we would, would ask that council would freeze those stormwater utility rates for this next year at the, at the current rate that they're at, and then, you know, beginning in 2024 or 2023, it would move with, with the rate of inflation at that point in time.
Those are going to be on next week's?
We, we would have those on the, on the council's agenda for action for next week. That is correct.
Thank you. Any other questions over report backs? Councilmember Grab?
Since Councilor Regenbach has spoken favorably of the second district councilman as relates to his determination to complete Sheridan Road after failure of the folks in Springfield to act and come up with the budget for some 16 months, I think I must look after you now. And manager, under the Wisconsin Avenue, question one...
Yes.
... aspect, and this is in part technical. Once design starts, pavement cores will be taken to determine for Wisconsin Avenue if we can mill and overlay, or if complete pavement removal and replacement is required. In other words, that's a significant savings for the overall project, depending on...
It, it could have significant savings for the overall project, and it really depends on the base underneath the street. If it, if we can, if we don't have to reconstruct the base, when we do the, a full road reconstruction, which we're going to do on Glenn Avenue, for example, or which we did on Sheridan, we had to replace the base underneath that. This would, this would possibly not be the case in, in the Wisconsin Avenue project, and so that's something we just, until we get in there and start to do the design work and they can do those core samples, we won't know for sure.
And that, that may be true for other corridors that we're going to be working on, correct?
Absolutely. I think that we need to, we need to be very judicious with our dollars. Obviously, we have a fixed amount. Hopefully, Congress takes up the infrastructure bill and moves something forward, but we can't, we can't wait on that. We need to just look with what we have in front of us and certainly work with our state legislative delegation to try and get as many dollars as we can back into Peoria as well, too.
Thank you.
Councilmember Kelly?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Manager, on item number nine, could you explain the reduction of debt service expenses for this coming budget?
Oh, sure. All right, so, so I think you're looking at the proposed motions that we put together and not the report backs, but, but what we did last week, what council did last week, is you acted on the, the refinancing of the peer market bonds, and then we also restructured some other debt. And I think that, and maybe I'll ask our finance director to just re... And I think that, and maybe I'll ask our finance director to just report on on what the bond sale actually looked like and what that means from a from a an overall debt service payment perspective, and then what that savings is really going to look like.
Before we get there, the refunding you're speaking of, this is beyond the refunding that we engaged in because of COVID.
That is correct. That is correct. This is, these are the the actions that you took last week, and then the the subsequent bond sale that we held after the council's action. I think that we have some very good news to report.
Great. Correct. So last week, we did go through the process of selling both of those refundings. We, the taxable issue sold pretty much exactly as was stated previously. The non-tax version did not perform as well in the longer term. But what we had put in the budget previously was what we had anticipated the sale would be in, obviously, '22 and '23. We had some savings in those years based off of how the different instruments sold. I believe the taxable issue had 12 different bonds, the non-tax had eight different bonds. So how those sold decided, at the end of the day, what our savings were. So we had some savings in years for '22 and '23. We had some higher costs in some of our out years, which will be factored into our future debt.
But the the takeaway on the on the peer debt is that we went from paying $2.5 million a year to $1.5 million a year. And it's going to be be paid almost entirely out of the taxes that are generated from the peer itself versus coming from other general fund dollars. So so that's a significant savings, and that provides some cushion, not only to the general fund as we look out for the next couple of years, but also as we have to continue to contribute to and contribute to our public safety funds with general fund dollars. So our public safety pension funds with general fund dollars. So so that's a positive step in in the right direction there.
Thank you. And is there anything else involved in the taxable sale beyond the pair?
No, it was just the peer.
Thank you.
Councilmember Jensen?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I've got a couple of questions on the report backs. The first one is on number three, part two, number three. I think the pension fee is not based on square footage of property, it's just the stormwater utility. Isn't that correct?
The pension fee is based on the on the square footage of the building size, and that's how it's calculated. And there's, so we we use the building size to calculate the size of the fee. And and it there's, I believe, there's four different class categories of that fee. I think that was in report back, in the first series of report backs, we have that.
Okay. And then my next question is in question four, or report back four. Can you explain how, you mentioned that one of the options to the city would be to create a regional taxing authority to fund the civic center? Just briefly explain how that works and what we would have to do.
It, this is legislation, so you'd be looking at crafting something that would that would require that. I think that's simply just looking at the fact that that the city of Peoria and Peorians provide the overwhelming support to the civic center, but there is, there is really no financial support coming from Tazewell or Woodford Counties. It's very similar in in situation to the airport authority.
Right.
So we'd have to craft something. You're talking about new legislation. You'd have to think that up, you'd have to come up with a concept, and then you'd have to get the legislature to support it.
So, I mean, if it was something that the council wanted to pursue, it would take, it'd be long-term, it would, because you'd have to get the legislation adopted.
Probably very long-term.
Like, more than a couple of years?
And probably multiple, multiple years and multiple attempts.
Okay. One question about number five, on the Rolling Acres project. Is that right now in our, in the CIP for this next year?
It is in the CIP. It's it's recommended as a project that we look at and and start to do some of the sewer lining in in Rolling Acres, so yes.
And what's the total cost of the project, or is it split amongst?
Let me look in the book, and I can tell you. Find it here.
While you're looking at that, I have another question. Well, wait.
I don't know why I can't find it alphabetically. I apologize. Maybe if if I could ask Director Crowde to look it up, and we'll go ahead and answer your questions.
Before, let me, should I finish my questions for you, Mr. Yurk? And and the report back number six, can you explain the the overtime process for the fire department and what its budget has been the last three years? It's my understanding, we've been, the city fire department, we've been using overtime for a number of years since we started the cuts that have happened over the last, I don't know, three or four years. We've had to rely on overtime to cover the amount of people needed for the apparatus. Do you know how long that's been? Has it been the last?
Maybe if I could ask Chief Bachmann to come to the microphone and explain or answer that question for you. And Rolling Acres is scheduled, that project is scheduled for design work in 2024 and implementation in 2025.
Okay, so it's not till 2024 and 2025?
Yes.
Thanks, Manager, Councilwoman Jensen. So if you're referring back to 2018, 2017, I guess it would have been 2019 when we actually cut the Rescue One and Rescue Two. We did begin browning them out in 2018. One of the reasons overtime was used was we didn't want to hire in the event that another machine was shut down and we weren't completely short. I don't think there was any intention to use it exclusively as overtime. I'll give you the example, in 2020, I believe it was 2020, no, 2021 of March, March of 2021, we had the uncertainty of Engine 20. And we were already, I believe, 11 people, 12 people short at that point.
Mm-hmm.
And with the uncertainty of Engine 20, we would not have wanted to onboard 12 people just to lay them off. So as soon as we had the vote, you guys had the vote on the council floor, that that we were going to keep Engine 20 in service, we started the process to get some people into our fire academy. That takes several months. I think we started the class right at the beginning of June, they just graduated in September. So, yeah, by the time we we have 16 new recruits, we were down, well, but right about 14. So I don't think there was any intention on the department's part, but that's just the way the numbers go. It is kind of like the police department in in regards of, it's it's a process to onboard people and go through the entire hiring process. So sometimes we get behind the eight ball.
Okay, and I understand that, and I appreciate that explanation and the history there. So related to that, I'd ask for another report back, similar to what you did for the fire. But could you give us a report back on the amount of overtime used and the cost of overtime for all the other departments other than fire?
We we have.
Like the last three years?
In report back three, one, we talk about the, how the, the departments manage it. We don't have the the actual dollars and cents to date.
Right.
We'll pull that information and get you that in a report back.
Okay.
We can do that.
That'd be great. And then on report back seven, you talk about how the city's working with Ameren now to purchase local green energy. Do you know how much?
We did, we did, not in this most recent contract, just due to the pricing and the cost of it, we did not go with green energy. But what we were doing is we were working with Home Field, which is Ameren, to to purchase energy from them, and then they were buying green energy on the open market. So it wasn't local green energy. It could have been energy that was purchased or created in four or five states away. What's happened now with the the recent energy bill that the General Assembly came out with is that that one of the pilot projects that they're looking at doing is looking at doing a a kind of power plant scale green energy project in the Peoria region. So looking at some of the power plants that we have here that are looking at 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 being shuttered, they're looking at that as a possible opportunity to run a pilot project and to create kind of this large utility scale green energy project. So this provides us an opportunity to work with Ameren and work with Home Field as we look at our next contract coming up, to try and actually do local green energy. And so that's something that we wanted to look at and pursue as we look at that. Because, you know, our our municipal aggregation program that we have, we buy energy, electricity, on behalf of 38,000 households throughout the city of Peoria. So we have some significant buying power, and our collective that we work with on on green energy or on municipal aggregation is one of the largest collectives in the in the country, and and certainly here in southern Illinois, as you get into Ameren's territory, we're like the largest account in terms of having that kind of buying power when we work with all the other municipalities in this central and southern central Illinois region to buy energy. So I think that we can certainly work with Home Field and and work with Ameren as that rolls out here in the next couple of years.
Okay. Thank you.
You bet.
That sounds like a a great idea. I hope it, it, I hope we're able to do that. Thank you.
Any other questions on the report backs? I just wanted to highlight from the manager's narrative is that expenses for fiscal year 2022 are recommended at $255,135.27, an increase of 24.6% from the 2021 project actuals. Also, 2023 expenses in the proposed budget decreased to $238,455,102, or less 6.5% as less capital spending is planned for 2023. But significant capital spending is is scheduled for 2022. In fact, it increases $33,992,303, or 142.6%. That's pretty significant, a much better picture of what we've been looking at in in the last several years. Also, the operating expenses increased by $17,379,000, or 10.8% as we spend the American Rescue Plan funds and restore positions cut over the last several years due to the pandemic. With that, the manager has proposed, for your consideration, nine motions to make adjustments to the proposed budget. They're going to take some time, because each one will have discussion and possibly some questions. But I'd like to begin to get through these motions, and perhaps you'll have more after we finish these nine motions. The first, I will turn to Councilmember Riegenbach.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I appreciate the report backs and the discussion we've had on this project, the Wisconsin Avenue Street reconstruction, as I said, is something that was part of the Wisconsin Business Court or plan that the council adopted back in 2014. And I'm happy to answer any questions from my colleagues on this. One question for you, Mr. Manager. On the the page two of the motion sheet there, is those numbers, 408, 401, that refers to the budget?
That, those are, the 401 is our capital fund, 408 is our local motor fuel tax fund. It's just a referencing point for, as we're putting this together, that we know where the dollars need to go in the appropriate bucket in the budget.
Speaking as the financial advisor, I always like to know where the money's coming from, so I appreciate that explanation. And I would move for approval, or move for, to restore $12.5 million for the Wisconsin Avenue Street project.
Can can you read that motion?
I would. Let me just read it the way it's written. Perhaps that would be easier. Sorry about that. I would move to amend the city of Peoria proposed 2022, 23 biannual budget for an additional $12.5 million for the Wisconsin Avenue project.
Is there a second to that motion, seconded by Councilmember Kelly? Discussion? Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Second item, I would turn to Councilmember Yopula.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Before we make a motion, I wanted the city manager to explain what this motion is about, and I would like to learn more about it.
Sure. Thank you, Councilman. Yes, as one of the requested items that came back from the council, from Councilmember Riegenbach, was how could we utilize the, or how could we balance the general fund? The proposed budget anticipated that we would be using $1.5 million of general fund reserves in 2022, and then $2.1 million of reserves in 2023. Staff has had the opportunity to look at the number of revenue additions and expenditure cuts, and we believe that we should be able to increase our our revenues, and then also make some reductions in the public works budget and in human resources for our contributions to the health fund. And that will end up putting more money into our our fund balance for the general fund. In fact, both funds would be in a positive situation with the the budget that you would then come forward and adopt, hopefully in two weeks.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. I move to approve.
Can you read that motion? Can you read that motion for the public?
So the motion is to amend the proposed 2022, 2023 biannual budget for an additional $1,120,000 in general fund revenue, and $850,000 in general fund expense cuts in 2022, and an additional $1,802,000 in general fund revenue, and $890,500 in general fund expense cuts in 2023.
Is there a second to that motion, seconded by Councilmember Jackson? Discussion for Kelly?
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Mr. Manager, I commend the staff for refiguring and refiguring. But I would like to ask the question. Why is it that our go-to department, Public Works, we just decided to do all this overtime for the fire department? We're, you know, we're doing this, we're doing that. We're going to make cuts, and we're, we're going to hit them for $775,000, or I'm sorry, $675, I guess. Oh, no, $775. It's not a whole lot of money, you know, but it just seems a little funny that every time we need money, that's where we go.
Councilman, the the Public Works Department's general fund budget had the largest increase of all the the departments from 2021 to 2022. In looking at that, we had made a recommendation, for example, to include a painter as one of the positions that we would restore. The budget also included $100,000 for a paint contract. That's been, we're recommending that we. That's been, we're recommending that we take that out. There's no need to double dip in that regard. There's extra dollars in discussing and looking at the current trends of where the department is spending funds, that we felt that we could make these adjustments and the department could live within the resources that they have. They will still have, as a percentage increase, the largest increase of any of the general fund department budgets from 2021 to 2022. So we're hearing you in terms of trying to restore the resources they need to deliver their operations. And then on the capital side, we have an unprecedented capital budget where they will be continuing to work to go forward from there.
Let us not forget that we hit them for $24 million the year before that. Our budget didn't start this year. Now, I don't want to get into a big to-do about this. The thing is, it just seems that's where we, when we needed money in COVID, that's where we went. And now we need a little more money here, and that's where we go. I'll leave it at that. I just would like to see, like I wanted to see in 2020, a little more sharing. And we, as I see it, we don't have it. But thank you very much, Mr. Manager. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. Councilmember Jensen?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I had a question about what specifically was being cut. I know you answered some of that in response to Councilman Kelly's question, but I don't know if you...
Yeah, there's, I think that the staffing for the parking garage labor, which is money that ultimately gets paid to Hartland Garages, was high in the budget. That was adjusted by $162,000. We do have a contract with Constellation Energy for our streetlights. With the addition of converting all of them to LED streetlights, we're seeing savings, so that number could be adjusted downward by $200,000. We're looking at our, just our water and sewer expenses and looking at tightening those up to correspond with actual spend. The paint contract that I mentioned, and then we had a very sizable increase in traffic supplies, and we're pulling that back down into kind of current spend levels. So those are the recommended cuts. In addition, I think we looked at the amount we've been contributing for our health insurance plan, and we felt that we could adjust that downward as well, which is in the human resources budget.
Okay, thank you. And I just want to set the record straight. Public Works is not the only department and not the number one department we go to. Last year, I mean, we cut, I think, was it 11 firefighters and a fire, you know, apparatus and engine? So I don't think what Councilman Kelly is saying is accurate. And almost all the departments were cut last year, but Public Works is not the number one we go to. We've cut a number of other departments when we were facing budget deficits, including last year. Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other discussion? Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Item three, I'm going to turn to Councilwoman Jackson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, before I make the motion, I just want to commend the city staff and my fellow council members for recognizing the need to get rid of these elephants in the First District, namely these old schools. And hopefully, we will begin the process of significant infrastructure demolition that's so desperately needed in the First District. So, having said that, I would like to make a motion to amend the city of Peoria proposed 2022-2023 biannual budget for an additional $2,68,403 in fiscal recovery funds, use for demolition of McKinley and Harrison schools, and a portion of the Allen Road project, and additional general fund expenses to account for fiscal recovery fund proposed spending and to support the recommended spending of fiscal recovery funds.
Is there a second to that motion, seconded by Councilmember Grab? Councilmember Allen?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I will gladly support this. I do want to give Ms. Jackson her roses for her advocacy for the demolition of McKinley and Harrison schools. I know that that was something that you campaigned on, and it looks like it is coming to fruition, so I definitely want to, knock on wood, it's coming to fruition, so I want to give you your roses on that. And also too, I'm very excited about work being done to Allen Road. For those listening, I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, Manager, but this will be when you turn off War Memorial all the way up into just Northmore, correct, for this part of the project?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, sounds good. That is all, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
You're welcome. Councilmember Euler?
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. I just want to say it's great that we're finally here having a monetary discussion on doing this. However, I just want to remind everyone of something I've said the last couple of years now, we have to find a way to stop this from happening. We need to figure out what it's going to take to work with the school district and get in front of these types of situations so that they don't go from their problem to our problem at the end of the day. I don't have the answers for that today, but I think that we need to start putting our heads together as we spend $2 million of the taxpayers' money and start to figure that out. Thank you.
You're welcome. Councilmember Jensen?
I just want to respond to Councilman Euler's comment. The city actually, after these, the situation happened with these two schools, the city did act proactively when the school on Moss Avenue was going to go for sale, and we, the city council actually brokered a deal to, we actually purchased it or held it for a while and found potential buyers and screened them to avoid that happening. So I don't think a big school like that has gone, has become vacant and gone on the market since then. But that was, we did put that in place because of what happened with these two schools a few years ago, I think it was before you got on the council.
Thank you. Any more discussion on this item? Cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. For item four, I'm going to go to Councilmember Allen.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would like to make a motion to amend the city of Peoria proposed 2022-2023 biannual budget for an additional $1,200,000 in the state motor fuel tax fund for acceptance of a distressed communities grant from the state of Illinois, an increase of $55,000 in the Western Avenue Street project for cameras and wayfinding.
Is there a second to that motion, seconded by Councilmember Jackson? I'm going to ask Manager Europe if you would explain that, that 1.2 million opportunity for us.
This is, this is great news for us, and it's great that the motion was made by the Fourth District Councilman in a project that's going to be in the First District that's going to help the design work on the Third District. So, kind of, I'll try and tie it all up together for you here with this. We applied for some funds through the Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity. They had a pot of money this year for communities that were impacted by civil unrest, and that they could apply for, you could apply for funds within that program to try and do some infrastructure improvements within that area. And so we applied, looking at the fact that we were working on the Western Avenue project. We knew that that was a perfect opportunity for us to apply for these funds and see if we could utilize those funds in that project. We applied for it with, actually asked for a million five. We asked for $300,000 to do some facade work with private businesses. That was unfortunately not granted, but the million two was. What it would do, though, is we knew that we had put in about $55,000 to enhance the Western Avenue project with some additional wayfinding and some additional camera work in there. So, these are cameras that will be tied back in that Public Works and the police department will be able to utilize. So, now we're bringing an additional $1.2 million in for this grant. This will go towards the Western Avenue project, but that frees up nearly $1,145,000 of state motor fuel tax that will then go towards the design work on the Wisconsin Avenue project. So, so that kind of all ties back in together, and it's a great opportunity for us to show that as we go out and we get more money, we get more grant money coming into the city, that it really helps the entire city as a whole.
Well, I commend the staff on making that grant application successfully. This is called other people's money, and it's always good to get it. Any other, okay, Councilmember Grab?
Yes, and this may be just slightly off, but we have money also for Western Avenue above the hill north of King Drive to go down to Farmington Road. Do we have any idea when that's going to be coming?
Councilman, that's the state-controlled portion, and I don't know, but let me get an answer for you, and we'll put that back in another report back for Council.
And I know we have, we had the great First and Second Districts come together. We interface, Second District touches three out of four of the other districts. We have money to complete MacArthur Highway in the budget from King Drive all the way up to Moss.
We do, and I believe, let me look at that, and I can tell you if it's funded for this year or for next. We are using that as part of the American Rescue Plan funding
Right.
to close that gap as well. Check on that real quick for you.
It's not a big deal. You can get with me later on, but I just wanted to talk about Western for a minute. If you can find it, fine, but...
It'll be 2023.
That's what, okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Any other comments, questions? Please cast your ballots. That motion passes unanimously. Item five, Councilmember Ruckregel?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. A motion to amend the city of Peoria's proposed 2022-2023 biannual budget for an additional $15,000 in both 2022 and 2023 for the purchase of TIF compliance software for economic development based on a recent state law change. And perhaps the city manager can kind of mention the state law change to our public.
I get a second to that motion first? Second to that motion? Councilmember Kelly?
Thank you. Yes, recently, the state of Illinois has required that for all of our TIF districts, we have some additional reporting requirements on the performance of the TIF district, the number of jobs that have been created. And this software, we're working with a local central Illinois vendor that has a presence here in Peoria and in McLean County to purchase a compliance software program that will provide that reporting and compliance needs to meet the state's law. It's about $15,000 for us to purchase this software. It would be allocated across all of our TIFs. That's why in year one, it's allocated across 10 TIFs at $1,500 per TIF district. In 2023, we actually see the Central Business District TIF expires, so the numbers go down to nine TIFs, and it's roughly at about $1,666 per TIF in order for us to pay for this software, so.
Did I hear you say that there's a relationship actually with the company and maybe having a footprint here in the Peoria area?
They do have a presence here in Peoria, and they also, they also have, they're a central Illinois software company. We've utilized them for some work with our economic development team in the past. And so this is, this is a good opportunity to use a local vendor to help us in that regard.
Thank you, Chair and so.
Questions? Councilmember Valpula?
Mr. Manager, what is this, what will be the outcome of the software that you're using?
Well, the major outcome is that we'll be able to catalog and document all of our redevelopment agreements that we have. We'll be able to identify the number of jobs created and document that within that. If there are changes based upon the assessed value of the benefits that need to be calculated, it'll be calculating that for us. And it provides it all in one location so that as we prepare those compliance reports for the state of Illinois, it'll save our staff the time and resources of having to go through and document all of that year after year after year.
Thank you, Mr. Manager.
You're welcome. Questions? Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Item number six, Councilmember Euler?
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. I think we've been talking about this for a good year and a half now. We've had guidance from the Downtown Development Corporation. I've had articles in the newspaper about the need for parking in the Warehouse District. I think we've heard from many potential developers and interested parties there, and I would like to make a motion to amend the city of Peoria proposed 2022-23 biannual budget for an additional $5,070,000 in bond proceeds and $5,070,000 for property acquisition and surface parking improvements in the 800 to 1,000 blocks of Washington Street in the Warehouse District TIF in 2022, and $330,000 of debt service expense in 2023.
It's seconded by Councilmember Ruckregel. Any questions? Please cast your ballots. That motion passes unanimously. Item number seven, Councilmember Jensen?
I move to amend the city of Peoria proposed 2022... Sorry. I move to amend the city of Peoria proposed 2022-2023 biannual budget for an additional $125,000 in both 2022 and 2023 for the use of the Illinois Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity grant funds for the mayor's youth program and corresponding expenses.
Is there a second to that motion, seconded by Councilmember Grab? Mr. Manager, can you give us some insight?
Again, this is, this is great news. We've been able to receive a quarter of a million dollars from the state of Illinois for the mayor's youth group and for other employment opportunities for youth for the city of Peoria. So, this is, this is really exciting. We've presented this here for you with $125,000 this year and $125,000 next year. If we have to spend it all in next year, we're going to reach out to DCO and confirm that tomorrow. We'll, we may have to amend the budget next week when we come back to you and front-load all of that into 2022. But, but we just wanted you to know that, again, there's more, more grant dollars coming in that allows us to continue to expand our scope and our reach at the city.
And many thanks to Council, excuse me, Senator Dave Kaler for securing those funds. Any questions? Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Item eight, Councilmember Ruckregel?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. A motion to amend the city of Peoria's proposed 2022-2023 biannual budget to reduce the property tax levy $40,000 in 2022 and $40,800 in 2023 per the direction of the city council to keep the tax rate constant.
Is there a second to that motion, seconded by Councilmember Jensen? Discussion? Any questions? Please cast your ballots. That motion passes unanimously. Item nine, Councilmember Kelly?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to amend the city of Peoria proposed 2022-2023 biannual budget to reduce debt service expenses by $223,700...
to reduce debt service expenses by $223,752 in 2022 and $15,739 in 2023, and to reduce the corresponding transfers between funds.
Is there a second to that motion? Seconded by Councilmember Allen. Are there any questions? I know the city manager provided some insight earlier, so please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Are there any additional motions to consider? Member Kelly?
I think we still need a motion to receive and file.
Yes, we do.
Not, so I will so move.
Okay. Seconded by Councilmember Ruckregal. Councilmember Euler.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. I'd like to talk about a word called integrity as it relates to the last meeting discussion on this budgetary topic. As promised during the meeting, I said afterwards I would seek legal guidance on whether the vote that was taken on the council floor related to reinstating fire engines was legal. Sought out the input of multiple attorneys with municipal experience. The unanimous response was no, it was not. We got feedback from Corporation Council outlining what some of the steps could be to make that right, not to change the outcome here, but to change a vote that was -- or to essentially eliminate a vote that was taken here that should not have been taken on the floor. Essentially, it was made a binding action when the fire chief sent an email stating that he was taking action based on the council's direction. That agenda item was not properly noticed on the agenda. That shouldn't have been a binding action during a receive and file that did not pertain to the item on the floor for discussion. And so I would just like to express the fact that I would like to see and would hope to see that some of the folks that could make change to that, to undo that, would consider that by the Friday morning deadline for the next meeting. Thank you.
You're welcome. We have a motion to receive and file. Any other comments, questions? Councilmember Regenbach?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just as a question to Corporation Council, and I certainly appreciate all the work and the email you sent out yesterday. Have you heard anything from the Attorney General's office about whether the item was germane? I think that was something that you had qualified as a maybe in your memo to us.
No, we have not heard back on our inquiry.
Would -- in addition to what Councilman Euler referenced, would -- if I'm reading your thoughts correctly, you said, "When matters go forward that later need clarity, we've added that matter to a subsequent agenda for ratification vote." How -- what would the process be to accomplish that?
Well, it could be a motion to reconsider. I believe that might be what Councilman Euler was alluding to, and we have a council process for that. In Rule 26, I think it's Rule 26 of the council rules, it states that by the Friday preceding the meeting, so it would need to be by this Friday, a -- let me look. I don't want to give you the wrong thing. The motion to reconsider must be made and seconded by members who voted on the prevailing side of the question. You would need to advise -- one of those individuals would need to advise the clerk that this was going to be on the agenda for a reconsideration. As far as a ratification vote goes, I think the example I gave was oftentimes when we're looking through the agenda, if we feel like something isn't clear, it's not uncommon. For example, we approved a budget amendment -- the council approved a budget amendment for AMT to deal with Peoria Cares calls. When we looked at those minutes, we later realized that the budget amendment went through, and although a contract was attached to that budget amendment, the contract itself was never separately approved. So then that was later placed back on the council agenda, just for clarity, to make sure it was clear that that contract was indeed approved, as well as the budget amendment.
And that was something that you and the city manager initiated. That was not anything from a council member requesting additional action.
I believe the city clerk is actually the one who caught that, and then we placed it. I think I drafted the council communication and placed it back on the agenda for clarification.
Well, knowing the significance of the action and wanting to have total clarity, if there is some ambiguity, I would think we would want to have that clarified, and perhaps the ratification vote might be something that would be a way to accomplish that, to make sure that the rules are followed, clearly that the outcomes set. But I'm not saying this very eloquently, I realize, because this is such uncharted waters, and I would just want to make sure that there's no doubt that the council gave that direction. So would it be appropriate, Corporation Council, if you hear from the Attorney General's office, would that be an action that you would initiate, you and the clerk or the manager? Because, again, if he determines that was not germane, then we would need a ratification vote, correct?
Correct.
So would it be redundant to do a ratification vote, either, you know, to initiate the process to do a ratification vote in the event that that happens? Or is that a safeguard that isn't necessarily required?
I find it unlikely that we will probably hear back from the Public Access Counselor before now and when the agenda would need to be finalized. So if a decision was made that that needed to be back on the agenda, I would suggest moving that forward without Counselor Pratt's advice.
Say that one more time, I'm sorry.
I don't know if we would necessarily want to hinge that decision on hearing back from the Public Access Counselor. Attorney Pratt is quite busy, and I find it unlikely we would get the opportunity to have her feedback prior to us needing to set the agenda for the next meeting.
Would it be in our best interest to notice a ratification vote as a safeguard?
I think procedurally, if there is any sort of doubt about whether or not an agenda item was properly noticed, you always would err on the side of caution and want to place that back on the next agenda.
And I guess that's the question at hand, and I would feel better moving with -- to a ratification vote to legitimize and remove all doubt from the action that the council took last week. So can I request that, or?
I don't know. I mean, legal counsel, one -- the first recommendation was a motion to reconsider, right, that would have to come from the prevailing members, right? There would have to be a motion and a second, both by prevailing members.
Yes.
Right?
And I think -- I'm not exactly sure. The ratification vote is a concept that I think I'm not particularly familiar with, but you said we did that previously. So I just want to make sure that there's no ambiguity as to what we voted on. So I'll leave it at that and let the discussion continue. Thank you.
Councilmember Kelly.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. When I came to the meeting this evening, I asked whether or not new business could be introduced. I was told that in a special meeting, it could not be.
But this is --
I will accept that, and the discussion we just had has nothing to do with receive and file, as was the case at our last meeting. Now, if we're going to go ahead and discuss this, then I'm going to discuss it. May I continue?
This is related to the budget, though.
This is -- the motion on the floor is to receive and file.
That's true.
I do not believe any of these comments have anything to do with receiving and filing.
Well, I think they're --
Talking about a different subject entirely.
They're related to the budget, though.
They are related to the budget, but we have a motion on the floor
Right.
To receive and file.
The budget.
Yes.
Right.
Yes, receive and file the budget, yes. Okay? Not -- I'm very sympathetic with Councilman Euler, Councilman Regenbach, but here we go again. Now, we have to have regular order here. I'm happy to introduce new business, but I was told at a special meeting, you can't introduce...
I don't view this as new business. It's related to the budget.
All right, I will go forward then, Madam Mayor. I have something we all have, our rules that we are supposed to follow. I think we're somewhat all familiar with these. Let me start with the law. This is the Illinois State Law. It says, "The General Assembly further declares it to be the public policy of this state, that its citizens shall be given advance notice of any -- and the right to attend all meetings at which any business of a public body is discussed or acted upon in any way." That was violated last week. Further, under the Ten Commandments of Parliamentary Procedure, item number four, only one main proposition can be on the floor at a time. Last week, we had a motion to receive and file. During that discussion, we got another motion. It wasn't an amendment to the motion. It wasn't a substitute motion. It was an entirely new motion that had nothing to do with receiving and filing. That violates number four. Further, and this is something we violate on a regular basis. I don't know that makes anything illegal, but it's procedure. We need a motion and a second on an item in order to begin debate on it. We can't start debating something and then later on have a motion, like just happened. Okay? The item on the agenda was receive and file. In order to talk about it, we needed a motion and a second to begin to talk about it. Now, first of all, it seems to me we violated the law. Secondly, we violated our own rules, and we're kind of in a mess because of that. So I would -- I have nothing more to say, Madam Mayor.
Okay. And I would argue that tonight, we had nine action items related to the budget that were not all agenda items. We're going through a process of deliberating on the biennial budget. There's discussion around this budget. That's -- you made a motion to receive and file, but we're still talking about the budget. I would argue that all these nine items that we voted on tonight were not listed separately as agenda items, that this is our budget process. Some of these items could have been voted on a week ago. One item was voted on a week ago as part of the budget process. We have legal counsel here that we turn to for legal advice, and we get that legal advice. I don't -- I rely on, and I hope we all rely on, our counsel, who's here to make sure that we are following order, that we're protected. Sometimes we do have to seek additional support, and I think that our counsel is seeking some additional insight from the Attorney General's office based upon some inquiries that have been made, you know, around the horseshoe. So that's my response, but I want to hear from Councilmember Ruckregal.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I would agree with you that since this was discussed last time, and I think it is part of the discussion tonight. But in talking with council several days ago, and I guess maybe this is actually a lot more simple than we seem to make it here, because this is within the purview of the city manager, and that was discussed at last meeting. And why we are discussing this at all, why we made a motion last week, why we took a vote on it, really, it was a vote that should never have been taken. We pay the city manager. We have an employee in the city manager. He has duties and functions which are within his purview. We don't vote on who he hires for police chief or fire chief. We don't -- we do not do that. And for us to parcel out one piece of his duty to say, "We're going to vote on that," is wrong. It's incorrect, and it's inconsistent. Now, it doesn't change what is the ultimate. So if everybody is trying to look at what the end game of opening it is, it still gets open, but that vote should not have been taken. And even tonight, that was not by our counsel, given as an option. It was, "Well, we have to do a reconsideration," which is not true. What we can very simply do is remove that vote from the record as an improper vote, which I think that we can all agree that it does have some improper attitudes about it, and it doesn't change it, because this can be a city manager action. He gets to live by this decision. He gets to decide if there's enough money in there. That's what we have a city manager for, because we have it within his purview. The rationale for what happened the other night was not about whether it was going to open or not, because those that were invested in that knew that it was within the city manager to be able to be able to do that. As a matter of fact, they had him craft the motion. So the most simplest thing, the most direct thing, the most transparent thing, and the most correct thing to do, is to remove that improper vote. We don't need the AG's office to be able to tell us that. We know that. We don't have to wait for their answer. Remove that vote, place the duties and responsibilities that we have into the city manager. And you know, that's where it lies. And it's the same action at the end of the day. It's just through the proper authority and channels that it's supposed to be done. Now, in the upcoming budget, we have the overall budget, which we'll be voting on. But that's different. But if the manager can sit here, and he has told us tonight, and he has told us in the last meeting, that he feels that there is money within the budget that he has to be able to work for, to be able to put this into operation, and he has also said tonight able to work for, to be able to put this into operation, and he has also said tonight that in case they, they overrun, or in case they get up to that ceiling, he'll make those decisions. Those are within his purview. Let the city manager do what the city manager's job and responsibilities are. Let's stop this nonsense.
Councilmember Graham?
Well, the only nonsense here is the extended tantrum of some of my colleagues who did not like the direction that was given to the city manager last time. I hope no one will levitate because of their extended tantrum over this. And attorney shopping is not appropriate, and if we are expending so much time, as one of my fellow counselors did, to get all kinds of alternate legal counsel information, I think that should be provided as a matter of courtesy to the entire body. Our Corporation Counsel provided an email with complete clarity on why there was nothing wrong with what was done. You guys just don't like the net effect. And as a matter of fact, I am thanking God that we had that additional apparatus ready to go at six o'clock in the morning on November 1, with the devastating high-rise fire that we had just a few feet from where we sit. So you guys can sit here and talk about process and attorney shop all you want to, but the people of Peoria are thankful that we have that additional apparatus there. There was nothing inappropriate about it at all. Every time certain members of this council don't get their way, they like to say, "It's Chicago-style this or Chicago-style that." It is nonsense. It's because you are not on the prevailing side, and thank God you weren't. Thank you.
You're welcome. We have a motion on the floor to receive and file. There's no more comments. Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. All right, Madam Clerk?
We are at citizens' opportunity to address the city council, and I did receive one comment in my office today.
Okay, I have two cards. Let's hear these first. First, we have Mr. Brad Reiser.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members. I'm Brad Reiser. I work for Illinois American Water, and I'm here to speak about the proposed city of Peoria budget and how, more importantly, how the COVID relief funds will be spent. It is an insult to essential water company employees who even consider earmarking COVID relief funds, or any funds for that matter, to pursue a takeover of the water system. We have an excellent track rate of delivering safe, reliable products to our customers. We take a lot of pride in what we do, and it's honestly more than just a job for all of us. We care about each other and our customers. This includes all of you. We care about making sure when you draw a bath for children, make dinner, open your business, or, God forbid, as we just spoke of, when our brothers and sisters at the fire department need water to fight a fire, water is there. Just the other week, I was on call with American Water over the weekend. Firefighters were battling an arson fire of an abandoned building, risking their safety on a hazard that could be addressed. Not to mention, when fires occur, that adds stress to our system, which we carefully manage. But that fire didn't need to happen. There are hundreds of abandoned buildings within Peoria which need to be torn down, something COVID relief funds could be used for. Funds could also be used for critical road repair. Every day, like most of us here, I'm dodging huge potholes on the way into work and to job sites. There are other, more important priorities for you, our leaders, to work on, rather than revisiting a water buyout. We've been down this path time and time again. For me, I went through it for the first time in 2018. It was a stressful time for me, my coworkers, and our families. Like other essential workers, our work did not stop during the pandemic, and it doesn't stop during buyout discussions, both major distractions for us and our families. While we can't wave a magic wand and make the pandemic go away, you all have the power to stop putting us through the stress of buyout talks again and again. Why not work with our leadership team to extend the option from every five years to possibly 10 or even 20 years? Why not work with us on behalf of the city of Peoria's citizens and residents instead of coming after a good company? There's no good reason to pursue this again. We appreciate all you do for the city of Peoria, and we trust that you'll make the right decision. So thank you for your opportunity to speak tonight.
Next, we have Mary Clark. Still here, Mary Clark? Okay. Madam Clerk, you have something by mail?
I did receive in my office an email from a citizen. Her name is Carrie Alms. "In conversations with fellow Peorians, there are concerns about the public's business as being conducted. Why does the Peoria City Council have a council rule to follow Roberts' Rules of Order and then not follow Roberts? Why and how does the city council repeatedly not follow the Illinois Open Meetings Act? Each and every agenda item for discussion must be brought forward with a motion and a second prior to any discussion by the council. Final action on any item must have been publicly noticed 48 hours in advance of the meeting at which said final action may occur so that the public is aware of what will be discussed. Motions not related to the topic under discussion are not allowable. If the city manager already has statutory authority to complete a duty, why would the council need to take action to direct the city manager to do this duty? Who is the official parliamentarian for the city council? Are there any situations in which a city attorney at a council meeting would be able to override the parliamentarian? The Peoria City Council meeting on October 26, 2021 was nothing less than a hot mess and demonstrated catastrophic leadership on many levels. Here are a few examples of failure to a lead. One, violation of OMA, Open Meetings Act, by no public notice 48 hours in advance of this meeting, that the city council was going to take final action on directing the city manager to use funds to pay overtime for a fire engine to be put into service, when the council had previously taken action contrary to what was being proposed. When a council member questioned the legality of this action, the city attorney stated that the city manager already had statutory authority to do said duty, and so it was acceptable, which then served as a feedback loop. Any final action has to be publicly noticed 48 hours in advance. The city attorney's explanation did not address the OMA violation raised by city council members. If the city manager already has statutory authority, then please cite the Illinois compiled statutes reference and read said reference. Please ask yourself this question: Why then would the council need to take any action? Who, what, why needs cover from this council vote? How is an agenda item to receive and file the 2022-2023 budget information then hijacked by a motion to approve that the council direct the city manager to use 2021 funds to pay overtime for a fire engine to be put into service? Again, not allowable. Nevertheless, it occurred based on the advice of the city attorney. Noncollegial behavior among council members. From listening to the meeting, it appeared that four council members had no idea that this issue was being brought forward for a vote. How would they know? They wouldn't, because this item missing in action, as it had not been properly noticed for the review of council members nor the public, and they were not part of this six-pack. Once that became known, that all council members did not know about this issue, there was no redirection or deferral of this item by any council member or any comment by the mayor. The silence was deafening as once again, groundhog dig was occurring around the horseshoe. Certain council members had talked with others, which is not unusual in and of itself, just that in this case, a certain subset of council members had gotten to six votes, and it was now full speed ahead. Where is the team building, the unity, the example of how to resolve differences that our community desperately needs modeled by the mayor and council members? Instead, exclusionary and violent behavior was a standard on view. Furthermore, how does the mayor create an advisory task force or committee with allegedly 50-ish members regarding decreasing gun violence and the SNET concept, and the public does not know who those members are and why these members are not open to the public? How is the SNET Advisory Task Force or Committee, as reported in the media, already reviewing proposals not in public view? What are currently slated to have over 1.3 million in funding from the public purse? We're squandering precious time, talents, efforts, and resources with human life and potential being the greatest waste and cost. Next year's murder per capita ranking will likely put Peoria high on the list, perhaps even at number one. Going forward, what will the mayor and the city council be modeling and building in and for our community? Nothing changes if nothing changes. Please walk the talk and actually be inclusive leaders and champions for all Peorians, starting with council members treating each other with respect and receiving training on Roberts' Rules of Order and the Illinois Open Meetings Act to conduct the people's business in public." And again, that was from Carrie Alms. And I believe that concludes our citizen comments. We would be at an executive session. We have no executive session.
Can I get a motion to adjourn? Moved by Councilmember Allen, seconded by Councilmember Ruck Regal. Please cast your ballots. Thank you for your service.